Do it now for the next four hours.
It didn't do the recording in progress. This thing's all weird now. Okay, and then your slideshow is. Where'd the PowerPoint go?
I did.
Trust her with Morris off.
Oh, I got some emails.
But it says my husband.
Renee, why are you entering this room?
Yeah, you're supposed to call her, right?
Wait, one second. Well, I got three, four things up here. I'm not that. That would be the word.
We need some Melissa to hear class.
Probably. All right. You're gonna introduce. You don't have to do it gavel is just. I know, sorry. You can do it next time.
That's okay. I don't need it right now. Oh. Welcome. Um, we'd like to introduce Patty Bobble Hill.
Woo.
We got it. We're practicing it. She is with, um, reading more than cities. And she is going to present this homelessness. Thing that's coming down on July first.
Already.
Thanks. Um, I need this because of them, right? Not because of me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nobody ever says I'm too quiet. Uh, so my name is Patty Mobile. I'm the executive director for the League of Oregon Cities. I'm assuming nobody on this side of the room has probably ever heard of that. Is that fair? You have, you have, okay. So for those who haven't, I saw you shake your head. No, you've never heard of that. Fair. Um, so for those who don't know who we are, um, Oregon has two hundred and forty-one home rural cities, like size one of them. All two hundred and forty-one cities essentially signed a contractual agreement to create my organization. We have three purposes. The first is we lobby on behalf of cities specifically at the state and the federal legislature. So we, we argue for cities to get more money, to not be preempted by state or federal law. We lobby on here. The second thing that we do is we do educational resources like this. So we provide trainings across the state. We hold two major conferences a year. We do webinars. We work on education. The third thing that we do is we provide best practices and some general guidance on how to comply with state laws, federal laws. We can do model ordinances. We just do a bunch of best practices. Yeah. One of the things that we've been focusing on a lot since late twenty nineteen is how cities regulate their public spaces when it comes to people who are experiencing homelessness. And the reason for that is because in twenty nineteen, there was a pretty pivotal court decision that impacts all of us here in Oregon. Um, and there's been subsequent court decisions and subsequent state laws that make it really complicated for local governments to understand what they can or cannot do with their public property now. And so what we did, starting about a year ago, was we convened a group of about fifteen municipal attorneys who have, um, each of us, and I should have gone back. Well, I'm the executive director now by trade. I am an attorney. I've been doing municipal law for over twenty years now, working exclusively for cities. Um, so we pulled together about fifteen attorneys who have all of us anywhere between fifteen to thirty years of municipal experience or really heavy experts in constitutional law. And we researched the cases that deal with homelessness in public spaces as well as some new state laws. And we created a guide on what cities can or cannot do with their public spaces. And then we built, um, a version of this training program. The full training program we rolled out actually takes half a day. I didn't assume most people wanted to stay through half a day once you were actually a land use planner, um, or city manager. So this is the condensed version that we've been giving in town halls uh, across the state when we met. This is personally my sixth kind of town hall slash informational hearing. I know it's not a town hall here today. Um, but also informational hearing on what the city government can or cannot do. Um, so I'm not here to give you advice on what you should do. I strongly believe each city is unique and different. You're gonna have to come together as a community, as a council, to figure out how you want to regulate your public spaces and how you want to work through the issues related into homelessness. I will tell you if you go back, one of the first things we do is we are lobbyists. Um, so sometimes interspersed in here, in addition to what the law selects, you're gonna hear me give you some policy advice that's based on what, in my experience lobbying the legislature, is important for cities to understand when they enact ordinances or regulations. If you don't want it to result in bad state preemption later. So we have a, we have a democratically controlled legislature. We have a democratic governor. I don't play politics. I am nonpartisan. But that matters in the real world in terms of some of the language we use at times, and it's important for people to pay attention to that as well. So I will occasionally intersperse that in here. Uh, if you have questions at any time, I'm sorry, I think most of you have seen some of this. I'm not deliberately ignoring you, but there's more of them. So I'm naturally gonna go this way. If you have questions, please ask. Just raise your hand and ask. If I don't see you, because I'm distracted, just say, hey, Patty Mobile, oh, you get whatever, and we'll stop talking. Um, this will be really boring if I lecture at you. Okay. First slide. Okay. So I want to be clear to begin with. When I, everything we're talking about today is just publicly owned property. So this has nothing to do with your personal property. So if you own your own home, if you own your own business, this is not about that private property rights. It's just public property. And there's three types of laws we have to worry about for public property regulation when people are experiencing homelessness. The first is the federal law. And then we have state law here in Oregon, and then we could have local laws. And what's important is federal law is at the top. It's gonna trump everything that happens at the state level, and then you have state law that will trump everything at the local level, and then at the base, it's us here at the bottom in local government. Next slide, please. And next slide. So we're gonna start with federal law. There are three types of issues at federal law that impact our cities and counties both can regulate their public spaces when it comes to people who are experiencing homelessness. The first and most important is the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution. And then there are two court decisions. Martin v. Boise and Blake v. Grant's pass. And those two court decisions are interpretations of the Eighth Amendment. Next slide, please. So the Eighth Amendment is not one most people generally talk about. We always talk about the First Amendment, people talking about free speech. They'll hear a lot about the Second Amendment, the right to bear arms, Fourth Amendment, cops can't go in your house without a warrant. We talk about those all the time. Eighth Amendment doesn't honestly get a lot of play. And what it generally says for purposes of this conversation is that the government, including cities and counties, cannot impose what is called cruel and unusual punishment on residents and citizens. So how does that relate to us? Well, it's kind of complicated. So way back in nineteen sixty-two, the United States Supreme Court heard a case that came out of the state of Texas. And in Texas, they had passed a state law that made it a crime to be an alcoholic. Not to be drunk in public, not to consume alcohol in public, but to be an alcoholic. And even as far back as the nineteen sixties, alcoholism was considered a disease. And what the United States Supreme Court said is, you can't punish somebody for their status or their being. They, they are ill. They have a mental illness. They are, they are sick. You cannot punish somebody for their status, right? That's not okay. You can punish somebody for their conduct. So if they were drunk or disorderly, you could punish that conduct. But you can't punish somebody's status. So flash forward, next slide, please. To Martin v. Boise. So this is a twenty, late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen decision from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna walk you through it. So in the city of Boise, Idaho, Boise, Idaho had a traditional camping order. This is pretty common. Most cities of any size across the country have a camping. And what the camping ordinance says is what most of them say, is that people can't sit, sleep, lie, or camp on public property, right? Pretty common. You'll see that throughout. And there was several homeless shelters inside the city of Boise limits. There were three specifically. All three had restrictions and limitations on them. Two of them had what we call religious-based restriction. So I don't know who you are, ma'am. I'm not picking on you, but you're in the front row. Um, so let's say, for example, you happen to be of the Jewish faith, and you are someone who's experiencing homelessness in Boise. And I run one of the shelters. My shelter is a Christian-based shelter, and I will give you a bed. But you have to agree to go to my Bible study. And you have to agree to go to my Christian worship church. That bed is not really available to you because you're, you're a strong believer of the Jewish faith. Okay. One of the other shelters had limitations on how long you could use it. So sorry, you didn't sit in the front row, but I looked at you even though you don't look at me, so I'm thinking on you next. So you're somebody who's living in Boise. Unfortunately, you are experiencing homelessness, and you've used that particular shelter before. And it's the thirty-first day, and they kick you out on day thirty-one, and you can't come back for a year. So even if that shelter has twenty-five open beds, those beds weren't open to you because you've already stayed for thirty days. So you had a group of homeless residents in the city of Boise who filed suit against Boise. And what they said was, when you arrest me or you cite me for sitting, sleeping, lying, or camping on public property, you are imposing cruel and unusual punishment against me and violation of the Eighth Amendment because you're punishing me for my status of being homeless. How does that work? The human body must biologically sleep. You can't prevent it, right? We might be able to stay for twenty-four hours, forty-eight, seventy-two, but at some point, we are biologically going to have to sit or rest or sleep. There's no way we can control it. That is a biological, organic fact. And so what the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said was, if I, if there's a homeless person and they would, they have nowhere else to go. They have no home. They have access to no shelter. And they biologically must sit. They must sleep. They must lie. Then the government can't penalize them for that sitting, that sleeping, or that lying, because to do so would be cruel and unusual punishment. It's just like the punishing an alcoholic in Texas back in the nineteen sixties. Makes sense? You don't have to agree with it. It just makes sense. Okay. Next slide, please. So what we know, so for those of you who don't know, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals based out of California. Yep, Boise's in Idaho, but it still impacts us. So the United States judicial system is broken into different circuits. We happen to fall in the Ninth Circuit. So the series of states, anytime an issue gets decided by the Ninth Circuit, Oregon has to follow it. So what we know after the Boise case is that cities, counties, and presumably the state cannot criminally punish a person who is homeless for sitting, sleeping, or lying on a public property if they have nowhere else to go. To do so would be cruel and unusual punishment and violate their Eighth Amendment constitutional right. We also know from the decision that cities and counties are not required to build shelters. The court decision specifically says that you have no obligation to provide shelter yourself as a governmental unit. It also says that you can't regulate the time, place, and manner of where that sitting, sleeping, and lying occurs as long as it's reasonable. So what does that mean? Time, place, and manner is usually something we talk about under the First Amendment. How many of you have been to city council meetings before here? My guess is you're only allowed to speak at certain times. Is that fair? Right? You do have those rules, right?
Yeah.
Sometimes I go to cities and they don't have those rules. So it's the same concept of when you can give public comment, right? The city has the right to tell you when you can give public comment. They could put a podium up and say, all public comment has to be given from there. You can only speak for three minutes. So what the court said from the Ninth Circuit was, you can regulate the time when people can sit, sleep, and lie on public property. You can regulate the places of public properties, the specific public places where homeless people can sit, sleep, and lie without being penalized. And the manner. So how they can sleep, how long they can sleep, when they can. They just have to be reasonable standards. They didn't give us any examples of what they would think, bless you, would be a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. They just said that we could impose them. The last thing they said is sorry, limits, which is somewhat troubling for certain cities. So you guys are, I know, right next door to North Bend and Coos Bay. Now, y'all are from here, somebody. You can tell when you pass in between those two cities. I have absolutely no idea when I cross the city between one to the other. The city limit piece from the Ninth Circuit decision is somewhat problematic, particularly for cities like North Bend and Coos Bay. Because what the decision essentially says is that, for example, I was a person who was experiencing homelessness in Coos Bay. If I have no place to go inside of Coos Bay, I can't be penalized for sitting, sleeping, and lying. Even if there were forty-five shelter beds available to me half a block away in North Bend. Which is somewhat problematic, because a lot of cities and counties are trying to collaborate regionally to provide like regional sources for people who are experiencing homelessness, right? So instead of every single city or every single county having a shelter, a navigation center, a safe sleep site, they're trying to partner together to share resources and put it together. This particular provision of the Martin case is somewhat concerning. It, it, it would suggest that may not be acceptable. So this is what we know. So what I know is that a city, county, or state cannot criminally punish somebody who is experiencing homelessness from sitting, sleeping, or lying on public property if they have nowhere else to go if that person is complying with your reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So if you do not regulate sitting, sleeping, or lying in your city, that's fine. You don't have to actually worry about this decision because you're not doing anything that could impose upon their constitutional rights. If you do have restrictions on where people can sit, sleep, or lie, they need to be objectively reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. Clear as mud? It's gonna get muddier. Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir.
No, one question. Who do you truly, if you have another place to go? He was saying, if you have no other place to go. There's always someplace else to go, correct?
No, not necessarily. So you can't, what we know from the court decision is you can't tell people they can't stay inside your city limits, right? And so you have to be able to identify typically law enforcement in most cases is their shelter bed. So at some point, it's also a staffing resource, right? So how much time can you spend identifying whether or not somebody actually has a place to go?
Okay, so I want to sleep in front of your business on the sidewalk. There's lots of other places to go.
But if the city's not regulating where it's prohibited or per, permitted, then you can't, if it's public property, you don't have any regulation that says they're not allowed to go there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, but you don't have to like it.
No.
Right? I'm getting any of you to like it, okay?
Yeah.
I'm just asking if it, if it makes sense, right? So if you have no regulation on the books that prohibits somebody from sitting, sleeping, or lying, then it's allowed. Whether you like it or not. If it's public property. Now, if you own it, you can do whatever you want with your own private property. And if there's no regulations prohibiting sitting, sleeping, or lying on those sidewalks, or at least in those particular locations, then it's permissible. Next slide, please. So what we don't know. So what we don't know, remember, I told you in the beginning, the reason the Eighth Amendment protects this is because the human body must rest. There are other things that the human body must do, not to be crude, but we do expel waste. What we don't know, what the Ninth Circuit did not tell us was if, since that's also a biological reality, if we can't prohibit that on public property, if there is no other place to do it in a more traditional bathroom facility. Trying to do this without being gross. We also don't know what specific time, place, and manner restrictions are, okay. So let me give you an example. It's not as bad here on the South Coast, but let's say you're in Joseph, Oregon. You're in the city of Joseph, Oregon, instead way up in New Orleans. And you want to pass an ordinance that essentially says, look, we get it. We don't, we, we've identified a particular place, right? We have a, we have a one acre parcel of land. We've not developed it. This is where we're gonna let people sit, sleep, camp. This is where we're gonna let basically homeless people find safe shelter. But we're gonna make you take your shelter down every morning at seven AM. That probably makes sense if the weather is like it is here. If it's twenty degrees below zero, is that really an objectively reasonable standard that they take down their shelter at seven o'clock AM? Probably not. But that's a guess, because we don't have any real decisions from the court yet on what that means. So a lot of times, if you were gonna sit down and talk with an attorney about how we regulate time, place, and manner, a lot of it is the attorneys making their best judgment based on the limited decisions that we have from the courts. So there's not, there's not a huge thing. So there's, I don't, is anybody in here in law enforcement or was in law enforcement? This might be the first time ever I've been in a city building where there's no cops. Um, so if, let's pretend.
Nobody.
Nobody. Let's pretend you were a law enforcement officer. If I sat down with most law enforcement officers, particularly those who've been around for at least a year or two on the job, and I said, hey, can you give me ten examples of things that would be unlawful for you to do during arrests? Can you give me five examples of something that would be considered an unreasonable search, something you did without a warrant? Most law enforcement officers can will them off like shit. And the reason they can do that, it's not just because they're well-trained, it's because we have fifty to sixty to seventy years worth of court decisions of examples where they did it well, or they did it badly. We have two court cases right now. And the facts are almost identical. So we don't have a lot of really good examples to say, yes or no. You can come on and sit, or you won't interrupt me at all. Make sure to. So we don't know what time, place, and manner restrictions we can do. Um, we also don't know what that means in terms of how much right of way can be obstructed, right? So we don't know if someone who's experiencing homelessness can block a right of way, so a sidewalk, an alley. And if they can, how long can they can, what manner can they do? The court didn't answer those questions for us. So we're kind of left trying to figure that one out. Okay. Next slide, please. So.
Yep. Sorry.
Most people, and by most people, I mean attorneys like myself, when that decision came out, I will apologize right now. If these phones go off, it's because I do do lobbying and we're in a legislative session, and I've already had one crisis blow up in the last twenty minutes. So I don't usually take it, so they know they're not supposed to call me right now. Um, so why the attorneys are trying to figure out what it means, right? So in twenty eighteen, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals basically told every city and county in its jurisdiction, if you're gonna regulate public property, if you're gonna, if you're gonna regulate whether or not somebody sits, sleeps, or lies on public property, and that person is someone who's experiencing homelessness, your regulation needs to be a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction, or you're gonna violate the constitutional rights of that person. So while we're trying to figure out what that means, next slide, please. Grants pass get us a solid. I'm just kidding. So Blake V. Grant. It is yours solid. Um, so Grant's past, sitting here obviously in Oregon. They were doing the same thing that I was doing at the league. They were trying to figure out what this Boise decision means. So they amended their ordinance in what, in a way that they hoped would be compliant with this decision. Their hope was not springing eternal. Um, they were sued by about four different homeless people in Grants Pass, saying, no, what you did still wasn't enough. You're still violating our Eighth Amendment right under the United States Constitution. Um, I've called it Blake V. Grant's pass. Blake, um, it was a young woman's name who was experiencing homelessness. She was what we call the lead petitioner. She has subsequently passed away, so they have renamed it to the second person who was the petitioner. Um, but anybody in circles is still calling it Blake V. Grant's pass. But if you Googled it, it would be something different right now. Um, next slide, please. So we know what's going on, essentially what the Ninth Circuit told us. So in Grant's pass, what they had on the books was an ordinance that prohibited camping on sidewalk streets, alleys, and their parks, basically everywhere. You couldn't camp. And camping included using bedding, tents, um, vehicles, any temporary place. You could not do that basically anywhere in the city of Grant's Pass. They had no permanent shelters of any kind. They had a thirty-day transitional housing, and it was severely limited on who could use them. So they get challenged, and it goes up to a federal district court. You can go to the next slide, here in Oregon. We didn't get a favorable ruling from that district court in Oregon at all. So it was appealed up to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. The league participated in support of that decision. We, we were actually quite hopeful at oral argument, and then the decision came out and we, it wasn't helpful. So if you remember, after Martin, after Boise case, what Boise told us, both Boise told us is that we cannot criminally punish somebody who's homeless, right? What Blake said is you can't criminally punish, and you can't civilly punish. So you can't just not arrest. You can't issue fines. It's both. The second thing Blake said was, it's not just regulating sitting, sleeping, or lying, it's keeping warm and dry. Or taking rudimentary protections from the elements, right? So again, if I'm in Joseph, Oregon, and it's twenty degrees below zero, I need to be able to protect myself from the elements in order to survive, right? I need some type of shelter, even if it's temporary, if I have any hope of surviving the winter. And then they reiterated what we call true and actual access. So you, it's not enough for a city, let's say the city of Lakeside didn't fact have a shelter. It's not enough to say, hey, we have twenty open beds. You can, you don't have to sleep here tonight. Go in the bed. And if you don't, I'm gonna arrest you. Because you're gonna actually have to determine is that bed available to you? And you go into it. Does going into that bed require you to give up some of your own personal religious beliefs? Are you prohibited from entering that shelter because there's been a durational limit that you've already reached? Or have you been previously kicked out of that shelter and they won't allow you in? Or are you somebody who may have a sex crimes conviction against you, and so you can't go into this particular shelter because there's children present? Are you under the influence of intoxicants or alcohol, and so you can't go into the shelter? So you actually have to have a shelter bed available for the specific person before you would attempt to cite them for violating the rules. Next slide, please. So. We thought it would get better. The Ninth Circuit doubled down on its case. And it went further than keeping warm and dry. It now says rudimentary protections from the elements, and they did not define that for us. Which is somewhat concerning, particularly in heavy fire area, area of parent Oregon, like Southern and Central Oregon. Does that mean that depending on weather conditions, somebody could light a fire? It's, it's not like we're originally from the Midwest, where if you light a campfire, nobody really worries about anything. You light a campfire, parent, July, everybody rightfully has some legitimate. We don't know the answer to that. We just know that they said that we're gonna have to allow rudimentary protections to be taken. They seem to allude to the fact that car camping is the same as camping on public property. It's the same as pitching a tent or some other temporary structure. That sleeping in your car is just another way of sleeping. Which was new. Um, and then unfortunately for us, they reiterated that city limits issue again that would impact a city like North Bend, Coos Bay. Next slide, please. Yes.
Question. Let's say, uh, there's an event going on on the coast here. All the campgrounds are full, all the motels are full. They have a hundred and fifty travel trailers going into town. And they want to camp in Lakeside.
Yep.
Can we legally stop them?
I, I would say if they're not somebody who's experiencing homelessness, probably. The, the practical part of it, sir, though, is how are you going to enforce it? So I think all of you, somebody sitting here, you don't have a law. You don't. So you're probably relying on a county sheriff, would be my guess. Is that fair? How many sheriffs do you have on call on any given day?
Two.
At any given time. Okay. So. If, if I was gonna be an obnoxious law professor, I would say, oh, absolutely. If they're not homeless, you, you can tell them they gotta go back home. They got somewhere to go. Take that travel chair and go back. The person who's been actually practicing for a city for twenty years is gonna tell you, you can say it, but you don't have a sheriff who's actually gonna be able to enforce it. So it's gonna be problematic, um, to be perfectly honest. Um, technically speaking, if they have somewhere else to go, and they have a home, and they're just here on vacation, and they don't want to pay for an RV slot, you could make them leave, and you could cite them. The question is gonna be important. Okay.
Now, if that individual, say, homeless person gets hurt on city property.
Hold that thought. Hold that thought. We'll get there. We'll get there. Yeah.
Back to them. The homeless people in trailers. If you're saying if somebody's coming to the coast to vacation and everything is full, you can have them removed if there's no place for them to put it. But if a homeless person comes here with a camp trailer, you can't.
They have nowhere to go.
Why? It's, it's something they can take at anyone.
That's true. It's gonna, I'm just telling you a little bit, because they have nowhere to go. They actually have nowhere to go. They're just being backed.
So basically, all these laws you're doing is making homelessness easier to beat.
That would be one opinion. That's an opinion to have, and I think there's some people who have it, what, from my perspective as an attorney, strictly as an attorney. If you believe what the Supreme Court did in the Texas case in nineteen sixty-two, that it's not appropriate to criminalize somebody for being an alcoholic, then the logic would apply. If somebody has no place to go, and they biologically have to sit, sleep, or lie, they have to sit, sleep, or lie somewhere.
Correct. But if you're making it so it's easy to do, I'm gonna give you five thousand dollars a week to be homeless. What would you do?
Well, I like a shower and a warm bed, so I would. But it's not, I don't want to be too social aspects of it. And I hear a few things. I live in Salem, so I have, I have a homeless problem in my community as well, right? There's a pallet, I think it's Matt America, it's not what I call a pallet shelter. There is a micro shelter village a block away from where I. There is a micro shelter village a block away from where I work, it has over a hundred and sixty people who are experiencing. So I understand the frustrations that you're having, but my jobs also require me, quite frankly, to read a lot of research and data and stuff. And most of the stuff would suggest that there are, that a lot of the people who are experiencing homelessness, it's not necessarily because of choices they've made, it's because one thing went wrong. Um, because there were people who were living paycheck to paycheck and then a medical emergency happened, or somebody lost their job. That doesn't mean that there aren't people who are violating legitimate laws when they're homeless, who are not, um. Having substance abuse issues that are negatively impacting everybody, but what is clear from my perspective, having read the data, is that there are different reasons why different people have homelessness. It's not a neat debate with one broad brush. Yes, sir.
So, does that say that they can stay indefinitely?
There's, there's no limitation on it, no. No. So, what we know, I'm gonna summarize again, after the, according to the Ninth Circuit, so under federal law, federal law. If I am somebody who is homeless. And I have nowhere else to go, be it a permanent home or shelter, a couch to surf on from a friend. I have a constitutional right to be able to sit, sleep and lie on public property, provided I'm complying with reasonable time, place and manner restrictions. And that includes being able to take rudimentary precautions from the elements, so I can survive those. That's where we are today. The reason I have this slide is change ahead, this will change. I know it will change. The reason I know it will change is that Grant's Pass case was decided by a three judge panel of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. So there's, there's a thing like fifteen or sixteen judges on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Most decisions, most decisions are farmed out by three judge panels. If you don't like the decision rendered by the three judge panel, you can file what's called an in bulk review. Essentially asking for a full Ninth Circuit Court to review the ruling. Now, that ruling from Grant Pass was a two-one decision, meaning there was a dissenting judge. The dissenting judge's opinion was echoing most of the arguments that cities and counties have been making, saying at a minimum, even if we agree. That you can't punish somebody who has nowhere else to go, you have to give us some clarity on what the heck a time, place and manner restriction is. You have to tell us what you mean by rudimentary protection, you have to give us some guardrails in which to operate. So that we can properly manage our public rights away for all users, not just one particular class of users. That is presently waiting for a decision from the Ninth Circuit. The other thing we know, most people don't necessarily know, the United States Supreme Court, actually, there's only about two hundred lawyers in the entire country who are allowed to argue in front of the United States. That's it, only two hundred who are, of those two hundred attorneys, something like ninety-five percent of all Supreme Court cases are litigated by ten. If you wanna get a case in front of the United States Supreme Court, you gotta get one of those ten attorneys to take your case. I'll be one, that's what happened. Some of those ten attorneys are working closely with Grant's Pass right now. They see this case as something that maybe go up to the United States Supreme Court, and the reason why is when the Martin decision came out of Boise back in twenty eighteen. City of Boise filed with the United States Supreme Court and asking for review. They ultimately denied that review, but they took a really long time in doing it. And what attorneys can practice in front of that court say is because of the length of time they took to make a decision about whether or not to accept the case. Led them to believe there was some disagreement among the justices about whether or not the court should take it. We also have a very different Supreme Court today than we did in twenty eighteen. So their decision could be different, so we do expect this to change. Now, I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna change in a way you like it. But we do, most of the lawyers, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of lawyers in practice in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals will tell you. That the stuff that I just told you about what the rules are today may not be the rules next year or in two years, or in three years. This is an evolving area of the law, it will continue to change, next slide. So, we have federal law, it's already confusing, it's already working. And now it's state law to help us. Next slide please. It's just that's facetious though.
Yeah.
So we have two house bills, I'll explain them, um, we have House Bill thirty-one fifteen and House Bill thirty-one twenty-four. These are the book, these bills have already been enacted, they were enacted in the twenty-one legislative session. So these are our law today, there's, there'll probably be more after this current legislative session by the time it's done. But these are what we have today, next slide please. So we'll start with House Bill thirty-one fifteen. What it essentially tried to do was what we would call codified Martin v. Boise. So to take the decision that came out of that Boise court and make it statutory law. And the reason they did that was is because if the Ninth Circuit would ever change its mind, or the United States Supreme Court would reverse the Ninth Circuit, that rule would still stand in Oregon under statute. So that even if you didn't have a constitutional right to sit, sleep, lie and keep warm and dry, you would have a statutory right to do so. So, what House Bill thirty-one fifteen essentially says is that any city or county that regulates. Sitting, lying, sleeping or keeping warm and dry on public property. Must use objectively reasonable standards when it comes to people who are experiencing homelessness in that right village. You do not have to pass an ordinance. If you do not regulate sitting, sleeping, lying or keeping warm and dry on public property, you have no problem. You have no constitutional worries, you have no statutory. But if you have an ordinance on the books that regulates somebody sitting, sleeping, lying or keeping warm and dry on public property. It needs to be objectively reasonable. And you need to have that in place by July first of this year. Now, as a lawyer, I'm gonna tell you that's a made up date, you should have already done it, because you had to do those things as soon as the Boise decision was issued in, in like November of twenty eighteen. But the state's gonna give you to July first of twenty-one, right? Do that, yes, sir.
I've never heard you mention yet drug usage, or does this come in the play, is that legal now that? People can throw their needles out on your, front of your business?
No, so, so, I, no, that's not, so you can still regulate others, right, well. I don't wanna say all drug use is illegal in Oregon.
Yeah.
But not. But littering, still a crime, using in public, still a crime, depending on the amounts of drugs you have, it could still be criminally punished. All of those things are still. Subject to criminal laws and subject to enforcement. Now, the practitioner means gonna tell you, you could arrest him and put him in jail, we don't have no jail beds, they're gonna give a piece, and that's just, that's just me being honest. Um, that's a nationwide problem. So, this isn't what that's about, remember, the Ninth Circuit, when it issued this ruling, the state legislatures, they're not worried about what I would call the ancillary effects. They're just worried about sitting, sleeping, lying, keeping warm and dry. Okay. Next slide please. The second bill that came out of the twenty twenty-one legislative session was House Bill thirty-one twenty-four, and that did two things related to what's gonna be called an established campsite. Meaning if the city or the county wants to remove an established campsite, they have to provide notice before doing so and they have to retain the property, next slide. So, what does establish mean? So, they didn't tell us. So I don't know what an established campsite mean, I don't know if it's as soon as you pitch your tent, it's established, I don't know if it's twenty-four hours, I don't know if it's a week, I don't know if it's a month. So, if a community or city, county wants to start removing established campsites. What most attorneys are recommending is that you adopt an ordinance and in that ordinance you define what you consider to be an established campsite. Um, and what I would tell you as a long-term practitioner. If you're going to create that ordinance, you better be able to enforce it, and you better be able to enforce it in the way you created it. So if you do not have the manpower to remove an established campsite within twenty-four hours of it being established, you can only do that with seven days' notice, then I would make it seven days. You're gonna wanna make sure that you can actually enforce what you write. But we don't know what established means, most people are taking a fairly conservative approach, um, until they get that own definition in their. Next slide please. So, let's say we know what an established campsite is, you have one here, your city wants to have it removed. There's certain things it has to do first, first, it has to give seventy-two hours written notice. Of the fact that they're going to remove that campsite. That notice has to be placed at every entry point to the campsite, so if this was the campsite up here where the mayor was sitting, we're gonna pretend these are all exit doors. That would be an entrance point, that would be an entrance point, and that would be an entrance point, meaning there needs to be a notice posted at all entrance point. Best practices would tell you that you should have staff go back at least twice a day, if not three times a day, to make sure the notice remains, because they often come down, so that they go up. And that when staff goes, if you have the ability to take a social worker or specialized uniformed resource officer, because not everybody can read. So that you can explain the contents of that notice to those people who may not have the same literacy skills with everybody else. There's an exception, if there's an emergency, you can remove the campsite immediately. Now. After twenty years in city government, not everything is an emergency, people. So I'll tell you, um, there's enough case law out there for us to tell you what it is. An emergency is actually something that is going to immediately harm life or property, okay? It's not because you've been annoyed, it's not because the most expensive landowner in town has complained, it's not because. They were yelling at kids as they walked by, it's literally life or property. So for example, let's say the campsite is, let's say the water main breaks, your main water line breaks. Where you need to make the repairs and right where that campsite is, that's probably an emergency, you could make it go. If all of a sudden you know that it's contaminated your water stream, probably an emergency, you can make it go. But generally speaking, you need to be able to document that it is actually an emergency to the public health. Not just because you're annoyed or inconvenienced, or you're gonna have a really bad newspaper article the next day. Next slide. Okay, so, House Bill thirty-one twenty-four says this notice requirement is applicable to public property. It does not define public property, which can create some problems for us. Because throughout the Oregon statutes, they define public property differently in some section than they do in other sections. So, what we would recommend, the attorneys who worked on this, is that any property the city owns, be it a park, a trail, a right of way. You know, an undeveloped alley, so if it's just an alley that's platted and you know that the city owns it, they've just never done anything. Anything that could be deemed to be public property, we would encourage you to err on the side of caution and assume that you've gotta give notice before you remove it. Wasn't the, the bestly defined statute that was best. Next slide please. So, if you're gonna remove an established campsite, you gotta give it the notice, there's some best practices I described. But then, if you need to remove the personal property, there's some restrictions involved in that and some obligations on the part of the government. If the property has absolutely no value or utility, you can discard it immediately. What a lot of people recommend, best practices is, usually you have law enforcement who participates heavily in any removal of established campsites. Also should have somebody who's closely working with the homelessness population in your community to help you identify whether or not something is or is not in fact valuable. So I always use myself as an example, my mother passed away about five or six years ago, she was an avid reader, I have a silver bookmark that she had. I don't think I could give it away at a garage sale for five cents, I mean, it's literally nothing, it means nothing to anybody except me. When literally the string, like normal string that like has a page, when it broke, my husband spent three hours with glasses on trying to fix it. Because I was an hysterical mess, because that thing needs more to me. So best practices often suggest that if you are removing an established campsite, you have somebody who are closely with the population to kind of help identify whether or not something really does have value or utility to the people. Whose stuff is being removed, but if it doesn't, you can discard it immediately. Unsanitary items, so things that have biohazards on them, you can throw those away immediately, you don't have to kill them as a city. If there are weapons, drugs or stolen property, those can be removed immediately by law enforcement only. So, if for some reason, come on in, um. If for some reason you were helping with the cleanup, since everybody in here told me they weren't law enforcement. And you were inside a tent and you're like, okay, look, there's a gun, I should give it to the cops, don't pick it up. Go get law enforcement, they're the only ones who are allowed to touch it. If the item that, that you're removing has value or utility, the city is required to keep it in a secure facility for thirty days. And that facility has to be located inside the city's jurisdiction. This can be proba- problematic in terms of storage capacity, come on in. I got two more seats, you just can't sit next to each other if you're a pair. Sorry. Um. You have to store it in the community, so if you were to remove an established campsite that was housing, say, ten people. You would have to figure out how you could store their property for thirty days inside the city of Lakeside. This has become problematic for cities who are trying to remove vehicles and RVs, because those are for A, particularly difficult to remove. And be almost impossible to store, at least at a reasonable price inside city lot. But those are what you have to do under House Bill thirty-one twenty-four. Next slide please. So then you have local law. Next slide. So, things to know, um, the statutes at play talk only about ordinances. A lot of the lawyers though, when we read those decisions from the Ninth Circuit, we think you need to go a little bit further than your ordinances. And you need to look at your operational policies as well. Um, and so by that, I mean, do you have rules that aren't in ordinance but that relate to parks? Does your utilities department have procedures about how they maintain their waterway systems or their watersheds? You need to be looking at anything that can deem to be a rule, regulation or ordinance. And if you do have something that regulates sitting, sleeping, lying or taking. Um, taking measures to protect yourself from the elements, you need to make sure that they're objectively reasonable. And if they're not, you need to make them objectively reasonable. And under the statute, you should be doing that before July first of this year. You don't have to do anything. If you choose not to regulate your public property at all, if you don't regulate sitting, sleeping, lying, keeping warm and dry, or taking protections from the elements, you're fine. You just can't enforce anything, because you have nothing to enforce. Next slide. So, we're gonna get to your question about, I think you were gonna ask me essentially, what happens if we set up and somebody gets hurt, is that fair? Fair question. So, there's this age-old legal principle called state-created danger, this is from decades and decades and we usually didn't have to worry about it. And it's on the slide, but it, the easiest way, it was really more by way of example. What state-created danger is essentially the theory that the government can't put somebody in an unsafe situation. And if we do, we're liable for the harm that that's caused. So one of the preeminent cases that people talk about with this is actually with law enforcement. So, I think it was in Michigan, somewhere in the Midwest, they get lots and lots of snow. And the two law enforcement officers came upon an individual in a vehicle snowy outside. Car was running, keys were in the ignition, he's passed out drunk on the steering wheel. They rouse him, he wakes up enough, they pull keys out of the car, they kick him out of the car and tell him to walk home. He's not capable of walking home, passes out in the, passes out in the snow, dies of hypothermia. And the court holds the city liable for his death, and they award a couple million dollars in damages to the family. And the theory is the state made it worse. Right, they put that individual in a more dangerous situation than they would have, right? They'd just taken the keys away from him and let him sleep it off in the car, he probably wouldn't have died from exposure. So, law enforcement created a more unsafe situation for the person, therefore they put him in a dangerous situation and they're liable for the repercussions of it. That is what we have to worry about, next slide please. What we have to worry about, if you were going to say, set aside a piece of property. Where people could sit, sleep and lie without doing anything. So what that means is if you're gonna create what we would call a managed camp. So let's say, for example, he has property and you said, look, I don't want any sitting, sleeping or lying in our business district, I don't want it on our sidewalks. I don't want it by the lake, we've got this little tiny piece of property over here, that's where it can happen, right? It's not gonna attract from economics, it's not gonna utilize the park, that's fine. But if you're gonna create that camp, you need to make sure that it's safe. And if you become aware of unsafe conditions, you need to remedy those unsafe conditions, because you can't, as the government, be directing and forcing people into unsafe situations. Without exposing yourself to liability. Makes sense? Yes, okay, so let's say, I'm gonna make one up, because I don't have a real one, so I'm just gonna make it up. So, um. Let's say, for example, um, you guys have a, you have a half acre lot, alright? And you're like, this is where, this is where we think it's acceptable, um, for people to essentially, right, who have nowhere else to go. We don't, we, we want them to have someplace where it's safe, where it's clean, we buy it and we put it here. And let's say there's power lines that run on top of it, and there's a storm, and one of those power lines starts to fall and it's sparking. And you don't fix it. And you just keep letting people camp there, and you keep sending people to camp there, and a week later, it blows, catches the camp on fire and people get injured or die. You probably put them in a dangerous situation.
Okay, why, if you know there's drug use and maybe perhaps dangerous people?
Great question, that's what we're worried about, here's why, so far, you're fine. But California, everybody like California? Felt like that was his crap. Okay, so, in California, um, there was a case, um, actually that was filed, uh, by a bunch of activists against, um. The city of Los Angeles and LA County for two different instances. Filed suit against them, basically alleging that they were creating a state-created danger policy, because they were allowing homeless residents to live. In, live underneath underpasses. And under those underpasses, it's unsafe, people are getting hit by cars, they were breathing in toxic fumes, and because they weren't being controlled by law enforcement, there was heavy drug use. And people were having overdoses and there was high crack. Now, a district court, so it's the lowest level federal court. Agreed with those advocates and actually ordered LA County and the city of LA to remove those camps and basically build new shelters and put everybody in shelters and take them out of those situations. Then that, it went up to the Ninth Circuit and the Ninth Circuit said, you are not reading the state-created danger principle right at all. The state just can't force somebody into a dangerous situation, it doesn't have an obligation to remove them from a dangerous. So far, we're okay, I do think that what. I do think that what we will see happen is perhaps adjacent residents saying, by not doing nothing nor creating a dangerous situation for me as a property owner. Based on the Ninth Circuit's decision in that LA County case, I think that's a really heavy hill to climb and I'm not sure it goes anywhere. But it is something that cities are worried about. It's a legitimate concern. It really is. So what we tell people is if you're thinking about creating a managed camp, you're gonna wanna make sure that it's safe. You're gonna wanna make sure that you monitor it somewhat regularly so if unsafe conditions arise, you can solve them in time. We are working, actually, there's a Rosework City Councilor who's been amazing this session. She's worked really hard to try and get a bill passed that would provide specific immunity for cities and counties who essentially allowed organic camps to be created in certain areas and didn't manage. So to avoid that state-created danger principle. It is, in a technical sense, dead right now, but it had a lot of traction in the House earlier this year. So we think we can attach it as an amendment to another bill that's still alive. It would be something probably specifically for y'all to know about and champion if you're interested in talking to your sentence about it. I can get the bill number before it, but we are working to try and provide some. You don't have any money to do what you need to do. The other thing that you have to worry about with state-created danger, and I feel bad for all of you who joined, but I'm not gonna go back and catch you up, sorry. So if you're confused, I apologize. The other thing that you have to worry about was state-created danger is time, place, and manner restriction and whether or not they're reasonable. So again, I'll take myself, for example, the city of Salem, right? We have pretty mild weather. We don't typically get snow. It doesn't typically get very cold. We just get a whole bunch of rain. And so let's say, for example, our reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are that generally speaking, by ten AM, you gotta take your tent each day. But it happens to be on this particular day, we're having an unseasonable cold front and we got three inches of snow and it's fifty degrees. You're gonna want whoever enforcing your ordinances then to not necessarily look at the letter of the rule, but identify if that rule is still reasonable given the weather conditions on the ground. While it may be reasonable to make somebody get out of shelter from the elements if it's fifty degrees outside, that rule may not be reasonable at fifteen degrees. So if you put an ordinance on the books and you have law enforcement or code enforcement officer enforcing it, you're gonna wanna make sure they know that they have, it's not enough to just know the rule. They have to know whether or not that rule is reasonable, given weather conditions and back pattern. Now, I would tell you, law enforcement is historically good at this because they are used to having to make decisions about whether or not something is objectively reasonable. That's in criminal code all the time. It's code enforcement officers who struggle with this a little bit more because they generally have a different background. But that is something to worry about from a liability. Next slide. That's it. So when I sum this up. Here is mud, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, everybody totally understands. Okay, so here's what I generally like to sum it up by saying. If you do not regulate sitting, sleeping, lying, or taking rudimentary protections on the elements on your public property, you don't have to do anything. You don't have to pass an ordinance, you don't have to pass a rule, you don't have to do anything. That also means though, that you can't have law enforcement telling somebody who's doing those things on public property, they have to go or they're gonna be arrested. If you decide that you will want to regulate somebody who is sitting, sleeping, lying, or taking rudimentary protections from the elements on public property, those regulations have to be objectively reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. There's not a whole lot of guidance on what would constitute a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. Some cities have already started tackling this. A little secret I would tell you, most lawyers are really good about stealing ideas from other communities who've already done it. There's at least a dozen communities in Oregon who have already threaded this needle or attempted to do so. Some of, have been done by attorneys I work with regularly and respect. I would copy and start from there. Don't start from scratch. Start from the people who've already done it. The third thing I would tell you, if I put my lobbying hat on, is one of the best examples of the city who did it, I think, well, was the city of Medford. Medford spent almost eighteen months studying their facts on the ground. I think they had somewhere of over forty different public meetings. Meetings with neighborhood association, business association, their visitor center, people with lived experience from homelessness, advocates in the field. And they have, what I, from my perspective, they have one of the most reason, objectively reasonable time, place, and manner ordinances I've ever seen, and they have still been sued. Why do I say that with my lobbying hat on? Is what we are starting to see is that is that by building that record in Medford, having all of those public meetings, they have a better record going into court. So when you actually go into court, if you have, if you get sued, it's not just about the ordinance that's passed. What's gonna come into play is all the conversations and discussions that led up to you passing that ordinance. And what Medford has is probably one of the best, what I would call, records of community collaboration, community outreach, of showing that this wasn't an effort to just kick homeless people out of their community. It was an effort to try and comply with the law in a humane manner that respected everybody's rights in a way that nobody was probably happy. I look at it like I look at my husband and I. When we first decided to not get, well, well, at some point, we decided we should actually share our funds. He thinks we should be saving an ungodly amount of money from our paychecks and I think we should be saving less. So we were saving somewhere in the middle. He thinks we're gonna be poor when we retire. I think we're saving too much money. So we're both slightly unhappy, but we're not pissed off. The reason I say that is, is if you are a community that wants to regulate these, Medford is a good example to follow. If you think that there's a chance you could end up in litigation. And I think any city who's gonna have an ordinance should assume that you're gonna end up in litigation. I think that's where we're going. And so if you're going to end up there, you should start from day one with the best possible defense when you end up in front of that court. And the last thing I tell everybody is, this entire presentation is about public property only. It's not about your private property or your private business property. It is just about property that is owned by governments on. I feel like I ignored all of you back here. I'm really sorry. Does anybody have questions? Yes, sir.
So, public, I mean, the private, we can do whatever we want.
Well, I mean, you can just like really nail it, like shoot people or beat them up, but yeah. You can keep them off your property, yeah.
Why don't we just make all the public happy?
Right, well, there's a reason that, do you wanna? But, but I guarantee you, as soon as you take away their obligation to maintain the streets, the sidewalks, the lights, the parks, the alleys, the sewers, y'all are gonna have a heck of a lot more expense on your side. So, there have been, I have, I'm not recommending this, I'm just repeating what I know. I do know that there are some cities who have vacated sidewalks in front of businesses and given essentially those sidewalks over to the business owners. So the business owners could regulate them, but it came with strength, right? Like they're now having to pay for upgrades. There's massive easement restrictions so that if there was like piping or even like like internet underneath, if somebody needs to get in, those companies are digging in the private property owners fixing it themselves. But there have been some cities who have chosen to at least do that in terms of sidewalks in front of private. That has happened, yes, in the back.
Because if you pass an ordinance, you have to be able to enforce it.
Yep.
That's what you said.
That's my advice, yeah.
And we don't have a place.
I wouldn't recommend that you do it. So my background is almost fifteen years in being an in-house city expert. So in my experience, if you can't actually enforce an ordinance you have on your books, it is statistically unlikely to make compliance. Now, there are people, right, I like to say, like, I don't need a statute that tells me not to murder people. I'm good. I know I'm not supposed to do that, right? I don't need a statute that tells me not to kick puppies or, you know, like beat children. I'm generally a good person. But when it comes to a lot of the things that nuisance ordinance applies to, you would be amazed at how many property owners won't just not do what they're supposed to do if they know they're not gonna be penalized for it. So, and you're a small community, right? Like you're gonna realize really quickly that they're not enforcing against Joe over there, so I can probably do it. I will tell you, there are some cities like yours who are smaller and I know that you are limited in your income stream, which is not uncommon as well, are banding together to use shared resources, right? I've seen some cities in eastern Oregon, four or five of them band together to all collectively funnel a little bit of money to hire one code enforcement officer, which has seen some improvement. You know, in my experience, if you can actually enforce the code that you have, you see compliance happen usually within six months real quick. Because all of a sudden, particularly in small towns, oh my gosh, they really are gonna find you five hundred dollars.
Before the horse.
Yeah.
I would think if you're willing to do something, we're gonna approach, you know, face off it. In a place, then maybe.
I don't know that you need law enforcement. I think you'd probably get by with code enforcement for a lot of the stuff. I think you'd probably get by with code enforcement officer and they're a lot cheaper. Yeah, yeah, they're a lot cheaper. Law enforcement shouldn't be compensated. They should, but they're cheaper. I think it's a conversation. When you're, when you're talking about something like the homelessness and how you regulate your public spaces, to me, that's a really big community-wide conversation that you have to have. And the cities that I've seen do it well, and whether they're small cities, I mean, cities of, you know, eight hundred people all the way up to Bend, nobody's moving quickly on these community conversations. These are six to twelve month long conversations. Trying to figure out how to do it best, make, again, nobody happy, but nobody mad either. And so it might be something you could almost do simple. But you're gonna have to have a funding resource, funding source for that. And if you, and even if you have a funding source, you're gonna wanna think about maybe because you're so small, do you really need a forty-hour a week code enforcement officer? And if you don't, is there a way to share, open a joint entrance to the city or county? Yes, in the back. They don't, which was, and so what typically was happening, and so cities were fighting them. And then what happens is if you don't pay the fine, you go to court. And if you can't pay the fine, you can be held in contempt of court. And one of the penalties for contempt of court is imprisonment. So what the court was essentially trying to say in the Ninth Circuit is, when you're issuing these civil penalties, you're just delaying what is essentially a criminal penalty at the end. If you're throwing them in jail, you're not doing it that, not even doing it. No, I mean, and that's not, to me, that's not a criticism of law enforcement, prosecutors, even public defenders. We don't have enough beds, we don't have enough space, we don't have enough personnel. And so they're choosing between putting child molesters in jail or drug users and child molesters go wherever they want. I think I saw somebody else's hand up in this row. Hold on, did I see somebody in this row? Did I make that up? Okay. I just didn't wanna skip somebody.
So I just had a question, the Housen County Airport history. Just last month, has said that they will not allow any camping on any of their properties. That it's only to be used for airport operations. How can they do that with all of these laws you just talked about?
Sure, so under state law, if I put it back up there, but state law only says the United States, that's mental special, special districts. They gotta pass under states are on. The two court decisions have been intermixing words like local government and cities. So it's not clear if they apply to special districts. Some special districts are taking, so taking it to assume at some point it will include them, others are not. Because it's an untested area.
Well, the airport is special.
It's a special district, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and there's another option too. So even if it was a city owner, let's say, for example, like, right? You could make, I think, an objectively reasonable decision that camping on airport property is not right, that because, you know, I mean, a hope plane don't crash, but it occasionally happens, right? That, that you've set it up so that it's, you know, it's a, it's a heavy dangerous situation. The same way, you know, if you were, if the city ran a mill, we wouldn't let camping happen on a mill, that thing. So it could be objectively reasonable.
But they own property, or they have a property way outside of airport operations area, so.
So I did North Bend Town Hall like six weeks ago. It was about a tough ride ahead. I think they had two or three times. Any other questions? No, okay, so if you're interested, I didn't send them out because I didn't know where it was gonna go. I have if you need some live reading this evening. So this is our legal guide. So basically, the entire PowerPoint presentation is reduced into more like a written format here, if you're interested. I will leave these here. You're welcome to take them if you want. If you have other questions, feel free to ask. We're here to help, again. I'm not taking a position, and I won't ever take a position on one of the best relay side or any other one of our members. That's for y'all to decide yourself. My goal really tonight is just to explain to you that if you are frustrated with your city or your county for not doing something, which is what I hear a lot, is it's not as easy to do as we would like to believe it is. And it's a pretty complicated needle to try and thread when you consider the federal law and the state law that you have to take in perfect as well as the different perspectives and viewpoints from community members. So, that's what I have. Were there any questions online? I think you said you had some people online.
Uh, no, those questions I was answering regarding other things.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions on the council, since I've ignored you all evening?
Well, we were at the town, at the North Bend Town Hall and senior presentation a couple of times.
Okay.
Yes. I, I, I'm glad these people, more people showed up. But thank you for mentioning that, you know, our hands are kinda tied.
No, and I will say, so this is, we did five statewide trainings on this. They were half an hour, mostly attended by city staff because it was much more technical. But this is the sixth town hall I've been to. And so it may feel like this is Lake Side's problem and only Lake Side's problem or South Coast's problem, but this is a statewide problem. And it's nationwide, yeah. Yeah, it is nationwide. I mean, it's more, it's more acute in the western portion of the United States than it is in others. The most recent reports reveal that quite heavily. But it is big cities, small cities. The other thing I would do, because I'm still laying out hope. So the Oregon Mayors Association, which is an association of obviously Oregon mayors, they put together a task force to study homelessness about a year ago. They didn't come up with any solution. Don't get your hopes up. But what they came up with was they identified some deficiencies. And from their perspective, and I would agree with that perspective, is that the people who are the first responders for the homelessness crisis are city officials, it's city. Right? They're in, they're in our downtown districts, they're in our neighborhoods. This is where the problem is. And so they've put together a proposal that is asking the state legislature and the governor to sign off on direct funding to all two hundred and forty-one cities in Oregon to be used for homelessness response as well as homelessness prevention. We have a lot of smaller cities who say, look, we may not have a homelessness problem today. We don't look like Salem, we don't look like Portland or Eugene. But I've got people who are, who are, you know, one bad moment away from calling in the homelessness and we need to stabilize them. So the proposal is a direct allocation at forty dollars per resident to every city, no city getting less than fifty thousand. The funds have wide flexibility for use in that area. I don't think we're gonna get the full package, but I will tell you, the governor and several key legislators are still meeting with us to try and give cities funding to respond to this. If that's something that appeals to you and you want more information about that, you can find me on the Lee Warren's website and I would be happy to put you in touch with your senator or your representative and give you the information on supporting that bill so that cities have the funding they need to actually provide responses that are. They're going here for me enough later. I think I'm good. Thank you very much for coming and talking with us.
Yes, thank you. It was very, thank you. Very appreciate it.
And it's not rude, but I'm not gonna say. I got a meeting in North Bend and then a three and a half hour drive. But thank you all for hosting. I appreciate it.
Do you wanna, do you wanna take like that? Like a, yeah, with a two minute, five minute?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're gonna do just five minutes, right, before we get to the city council and start. Within a quick. Yes.
Oh, this meeting to order. April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, before we get started, we want to, if you've noticed, Councilor Miller is not in attendance. And we want to take a moment of silence for his loss of his wife. Okay, so if we just take a moment of silence. Right. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you for your patience tonight. As we, so we'll be sorry. I know there's a lot of you here that a lot more than usual. And so I just wanna let you know that everybody will get, if you wanna, wanna comment, they will get their three minutes. But I do wanna let you know that the city council will listen to, but will not take any action or hold any discussion, nor make any decisions on the comments. Um, if there is a, something that you want to know about, um, the, and the council wishes, we will ask the staff to look into that. Okay, so. We will stick to the agenda. Right, roll call of Councilor, Councilor Hearn.
I'm here.
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 Hello, Councilor Rutter.
I'm here.
Councilor. Alan.
There you go.
So, um, please show that everybody's in attendance with the exception of Tom Mill. All right, so citizen comments. Um, like I said, everybody will have three minutes, and then to comment for items that are not on the agenda. So do we have any citizen comments? All right.
For the record, my name is Jim Towey. I'm with out of Northlake. Um, been in many city council meetings over the last four years. I've seen changes happen in the city. One of the big ones is looking at how many people show up in a room for a city council meeting. I mean, it's, there's important stuff going on in our city, but it's fantastic to see that people care enough to show up for a meeting. It's really, as you said, on the internet, and you complain or bring up concerns, a lot of them are legitimate, because then we don't see a city council, so it's very heartwarming to see that there are a lot of people that care. That being said, um, starting with Melissa. Um, we've gone through, she's the fourth city manager I've seen in four years. And that can't be good for a city. Um, I don't know how you get stability doing that, and I like the direction Moses is going. And I think that, um, we all need to support our city manager. We can all ask for directions that we want the city to go. But, um, she's not gonna hear it unless you show up and tell her, and, uh, seems like the council that we have and the manager we have are responsive. They do listen, and they do try to help Lakeside. That's why they're up here. Uh, with the exception of Melissa, um, all of our counselors are volunteers. Uh, so with that. Thank you, guys. It's easy. Playing, it's easy to tell people what they should or shouldn't do. It's easy to tell people that the city's shit, or the city's not going the way you want it to. It's hard to do something. It's hard to give your life up. It's hard to put yourself out there. And we have ten people on the internet that sound like a thousand, and they want you all to be hung, you know, um, I don't. I like the way. Everyone's working together. Our city's coming together. I see good things happening in our city, and it couldn't happen if you guys didn't have it. Definitely here, he is. So, thank you. You're doing what you're doing.
Anyone else?
That's really good. That's hard to follow.
So my name is Shannon Khan. I'm a county junior or resident here to Lake Side. Bought a house, one fifty, one twelve. Um, we applied for a business license for a short-term rental. We wanted to be a part of the excitement that's happening with the uh, transit attacks and things like that, and to bring more people to the community when we're not using our homes personally. Um, and we went to, uh, apply for that license, and we were denied the license. Uh, we were denied the license based on DAP's interpretation of the code. And DAP has interpreted that, um, lodging, which there is no special term for short-term rentals, it's all lodging. So a vacation home has to be in a commercial zone. So it is, um. I'm sorry, I have all these papers and. So, and I, and I don't, I'm sure the council is aware of this, but everything got rezoned, and so the two areas that you are allowed to have a short-term rental in would be commercial. Um, and that does not require any kind of special permit. Um, the other would be the one they got rid of, which was light industry. It's no longer in the zoning cap. And you can have that with a specis, with a special conditional license. Um, or marine commercial, which you can also have with a, um, a special conditional license from the city. So based on this interpretation, short-term rentals are no longer allowed in Lakeside unless they're in those specific areas, and you have several short-term rentals that are not in that area. And so, uh, Commissioner Crouch asked me specifically to ask the council. Gave me the verbiage. Ask them to request that planning commission work in codes for short-term rentals in residential zones. Apparently, they couldn't make that determination. So that's what I'm asking. Please make that request. Um, no, and I'm sure it has lots of opinions, so I'll, I'll, I'll now step down, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of opinions, but um, that, that's what we're trying to do. Um, I personally have tried to rent a short-term rental on Lakeside over the years. And to find one that would, uh, fit our entire family is pretty difficult. You don't have a lot of, um, larger, uh, short-term rentals, and the one that we have is four bedrooms. It has ten, and we really want to be a part of the positivity that's happening in Lakeside. Um, now I think I sit down. I'm sorry.
I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, please.
I'm Karen Roach. I live in Lakeside. I want to counsel you on my not talking about my husband. I, I've gone to a couple of council meetings, so, gone to the planning commission meetings. And I read Facebook. I don't reply to a lot of stuff on Facebook. I don't appreciate citizens being called people warriors grouped in that manner. So I just thought I would bring it up, that people actually are watching on Zoom, and they do care in the recent minutes, so they should be treated respectfully. I also went to the candidates' roundtable or whatever it was before the election, and transparency was stressed. We didn't see a lot of transparency with the purchase of the property. I know it hasn't happened yet, but I would love to see an appraisal, because I can't believe the city wants to pay that much for a piece of anything. That's it.
Right, thank you. All right, any more comments? All right, we'll move on. All right, so go to consent agenda. Um, and on that is the approval of March nine, meeting minutes, for our March forty, meeting minutes. Acceptance of March Spence payroll reports, we got date reports, Department of Budget Committee members, which is meeting Sean Boring. And Lori Atitis, and Department of Library Board, which we run there, Roscoe, and we, Yom Boro. Oh, if I could do a motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to, for the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Nay. Okay, oh, you're right.
Who's second?
I'll do Ritter.
Oh. Did you second it, but you're not voting for it? Okay, that's.
Okay. All right. Okay, so our next I don't know what discussion, Karen.
I'll look that up.
Is public hearing on ordinance number twenty-three dash three zero eight, ordinance refueling and adopting a new chapter seventy titled seven of the Lake Side municipal code, authorizing operation of operating vehicles to utilize the route to sin room buildings. Okay.
Would you like a staff report?
I would love a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. And so this, uh, ordinance was, uh, so your staff report has a little bit of history of when the first ordinance came into play, and then you had, I think, two subsequent ordinances amending the original ordinance. And this goes back to the whole issue of, uh, at some point, the city codified, meaning they put their ordinances into, to a chapter form, which is really, really, um, beneficial and helpful, um, to cities. The problem is when you don't carry that through, and you start amending ordinances, and then not putting them back to the codifier and, and producing those in that codified, um, book, and it's through a company. It costs money, and so I, I understand why the city stopped doing that. Um, it's one of those things, once you start, you kind of need to continue. Um, so what we have is ordinances on top of ordinances, and so when you go to look for an ordinance, you really don't know what what it says anymore, because you almost have to retype out and look and layer. And so that's what we did. Um, and so I put what the existing ordinance, how it reads in your packet, so you know what it exactly looks like with all the changes. And, um, you'll notice, um, for instance, in the section, um, in the section, 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 the purpose, the seventy point oh one, seventy point oh two, when you get to seventy point oh three, um, that's not what it is anymore. It's actually changed. Uh, seventy oh four is not there, seventy oh five, uh, is not there, and then you don't even list all the amendments that had come through, so. Um, logistically, the ordinance was a mess. Uh, there was also, um, the purpose statement was in the negative from the original ordinance that had come to the city. Um, so basically, it was setting up the whole ordinance as, um, not prohibited. And that was kind of never changed, so we. And that was kind of never changed, so we put that back into the positive because now it's all about ATV usage in the city and so quite a bit of changes, we slimmed it down. So you have an ordinance before you adopting the chapter that's codified now. And so, and it will have the attachments, it's got a map and it's got the descriptive language of where the route is, that's all true. And so we took the definitions down, we had a lot of help from Ian Caldwell with, sorry, I'm admitting people, with State Parks and Rec and we had the sheriff's office also look it over and give feedback as well as our attorney. And so you had quite a few agencies involved and everybody, I think, liked the outcome of it, it slimmed down, it's very easy to read. And I'll leave it at that unless there are questions from me. And if you have questions for Ian, he's here also.
You have a question?
Uh, the, the new one.
I can't hear you. Sorry.
New ordinance adds North Lake Road and a little piece of H Street.
Yes.
And those are already covered by the last vote that we had. So why do we need that in there?
Because at your last meeting, when you discussed this and authorized me to bring back an ordinance, you wanted that reflected as the route. You wanted the route to reflect the piece that was missing at the lodge and also down north, North Lake.
Thing that concerns me about it is that it's it, it's a bit of a slap in the face to the voters who are going to keep the ordinance the way it was, the route we have. So, and I have a problem with that. And I am, but it's already covered by ability to access the route.
Well, any other questions? I, that was your decision.
I think this more clarifies it because people were saying that they couldn't go from Park and Eighth down to the lodge and Ringo's because it wasn't directly on the route and this kind of clarifies that. That you can go down to the lodge and to Marina. And over to North Lake and just to cover all the other RV parks and everything.
I think if I remember rightly, when you were reading from the original ordinance, the, the original intent was to include at least two Osprey. And that did not get put into the ordinance when it was actually appointed. But the original intent and all the research and everything else that was background of that included Osprey. Yeah. Right, and so I think that's why we had staff do that.
Can council, can council please use our mics, it's people, we're getting, thank you.
If the people vote on some, and you just what the ordinance says, a no vote will result in the ordinance staying and the route staying the same. Like I say, it's redundant since they actually access to the road many were given visibility to get the route.
Well, that, that yeah, because we had talked about that and it restricted, left two businesses out. Cause you could, you have to, you, you have to take the direct route or the most direct path to the route. But, and that would end right there at my case, where you're leaving two businesses out that were initially supposed to be in the ordinance.
And I have the north end. I can see interpreting the original ordinance. That is, doesn't exactly stand. It does say that the H Street is have access to the airport maybe.
Yes, that's from Hilltop.
But the ordinance, the original ordinance and none of those would ever allow people to go anywhere. Why are we talking about access to the and people are staying at
Counselor Poindexter, we're still getting comments that they can't hear you because of the mic, sorry.
They have access to it. Anybody that's staying at the lodge or that RV park can drive out to the route and go off to the dump. But, but they have it, so why, why are we changing?
I, I think it's the, the other way, I think it's the fact that people out on, on the other side of town or staying somewhere can't drive to. They can only get direct access to the route, but if the route doesn't go there, they can't get access to that business. So it's the other way, not leaving Osprey, it's coming to the pub to eat dinner or coming to the lodge to eat dinner. I, that's the argument, I'm not here to, I, I'm not the one making the decision.
Use the route, go to the same, and get back. It just seems redundant and seems like it violates the vote of the people, but that's a lawsuit, whatever the council's employees are. I think I, I was for access pretty much by everybody everywhere right in the beginning of all of this, but that isn't the way to vote.
Is there any public comment on that?
Yeah. You guys have like a map.
Yeah, can you, if, sorry Jim, if you're gonna do a public comment, you gotta, yeah, it was all part of the, it's all part, it's in the packet, so it is in the packet, it's, there's a map and there's a legal description both that are attached. Well, it's online, yeah, it's online, yeah, it's online and I actually emailed you, I think the packet, yeah.
My name is Frank Kinsey. I think, I think it was a misconception. I think what the whole thing, they're cleaning everything up was about was people were allowed to go to the caves, but they were not allowed to go to the lodge. Because that, the route ended at the caves. And I believe that this was to address that situation to where the, the people that come in off the dunes could go to the lodge for lunch or dinner, whatever. And, and to the boatyard. And I think that's what the whole thing's about, I don't believe that it's changing that much, it's changing the fact that how much, is that a hundred feet? That's, you know, from the entrance to the cage, to the lodge, I think that's pretty much what the whole thing was about was people were saying, hey, nobody can legally go to the lodge. Which was not the intention.
Well, the, how I understood it was the original intent of the original route was supposed to include Osprey and the lodge. People could come in on the dunes, stay on the route. And they could go to lunch, they could go to the store, they could go do what they wanted to do on the route. And they could go back to the dunes, people that gave people camping the opportunity to come to town and utilize our services. So this, what went to the, the vote this last time was for local people or people staying at Airbnbs and stuff was to access the route. To be able to, it's not fair for people coming in to access it and our people not be able to access it from their homes. So but the original route was to include, from what I understood, I was not the mayor and I don't even, I don't even know if I was on council at that one. Was to include Osprey point and, and, you know, and that owner, whether you like anybody or not, the owner of was one of the big pushers for that route access was so that people staying at Osprey could access the route. And that was, the route was originally supposed to have gone there. And the same way with the lodge, people could, I mean, you're staying at the lodge and you had to trailer your trailer your ATV, you know, a hundred feet or whatever it is. And that was originally, that's how I interpreted it. I may have been wrong, but that's what I thought it was.
I was just gonna say, can we just continue, get public comment and, and then you guys can deliberate, that's okay.
Another public comment, if you don't mind. Regarding what you talked about Alan, and I understand where you're coming from and the last thing I want to do is, is get something that people voted on that were giving the perception that it's changing. But I don't believe it is, and I believe that like Melissa stated, it's just trying to clear everything up so there's no discrepancies. And Alan, directly to the two things that you brought up, is I know that David Linda Grover here, Mayor Edwards is here, but he would vouch for what I'm saying, I've been a part of this from the very beginning. I know when David Linda wanted entertain buying the lodge, they actually reached out to city council and the mayor and were told that the lodge is definitively on the route. And some of that, and I'll just take the lodge itself, some of that I think is because the language took it to Hilltop and if I'm not mistaken, right at Hilltop, it turns into private property right there, which is lodge's property.
Yeah.
And I don't know whether it's one foot or a hundred feet, but I know that before they purchased the lodge, which is a big investment in their life and a great investment for our city. One of the best things happened to our city since I've lived here. They were misled by city council and the mayor on what was happening with the route. And I don't like that at all. Two phenomenal people that are working their butts off to change our city. And they could potentially be harmed because the wording of the route wasn't done the way it was told to them or me or everyone else that popped in the route. So that's just the lodge itself. And it seemed ridiculous that you have to turn on Park, but you can't go to the lodge, or the marina for that matter, John and Kathy were helping us. In the beginning, they weren't for ATVs, the owners, the previous owners of Ringo's who've now sold. But they fully thought that if we passed the route, that they were included on there. And I know that, they're friends, so that would have been deception to the marina and the lodge, which are the biggest businesses we have in our city. Huge estate. As for Osprey, we had many council meetings and we presented and we went back and forth, I talked to the mayor first, the ex-mayor person many times. And he took personal responsibility for the access through County Park and it was probably his biggest, other than the ATVs ever coming in front of Mayor Edwards, which he dealt with as best he could. He had an arrangement with Coos County to let people through County Park into Osprey. And there was, they were gonna cut a hole in the fence and everything else, and we actually went to some Coos County meetings where the commissioners there talked about it and they talked about, well, why do we need a hole right there? Why don't we put it behind our utility shed and along a different street and they were, so they were involved in also at that point still letting access to Osprey. They changed quickly after that, a few months later, there was a meeting and they were all for going down north. They're like, this is ridiculous, we're not gonna allow traffic through County Park that aren't staying in our park to access another business, you guys need to take it down North Lake Road. Well, that was just a whole nother can of worms right there, huge, and we did put it on the dump. And we lost by a buck for access, not for Chris Barnett, not for Osprey point. But for me personally, I didn't want to see people coming off the dunes going, why, or I can come to the lakeside and get a ticket riding down North Lake, seem ridiculous. But we're inviting people to our city and they're gonna get fat tickets. So just, nothing else about the route, but the two things that are being clarified the most here are access to Osprey, access to the lodge and the arena, which from day one, Melissa presented, we've been islands pushing for this. When we got involved, that was always the intent, it's in minutes, it's, it's out there, it's provable. The intent was to go to that ATV access to our businesses. Which is the lodge, which is the marina, which is Osprey. So I don't, I don't feel there's favoritism to any of them, other than I don't like the fact that David Linda tried to do due diligence by talking to the mayor and talking to council. And now here, they're sitting here hoping that this passes and it's cleaned up once and for all, so. That's it. You know, and Alan, I do understand this.
And you're right, that was, those two things were mistakes. And we know why in the article, we know
And I, and I'm hoping, and I, and I like to think that, you know, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I don't know the realities of any of that stuff. But I like to think that city councils are here and a city manager is here so that if there are little things that need to be tweaked in our codes and our laws and anything that's passed, you guys have the authority to do that, I firmly believe that you do. And I don't think this is a big adjustment, I do actually think it does reflect what our citizens, the ones that voted to pass it, what they wanted. I don't think it was to keep it exactly the way it was Alan, where you couldn't get to the lodge legally. So, so it's just a different interpretation, but you guys will do what your conscience lets you do, but I hope that clears it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Alright, where was I? Did you finish your staff comments to us, you were finished?
I did, I mean, I can add a couple of things that, I mean, we've gotten off track about. I kind of want to keep the comments rolling so we can move through, the meeting's kind of going along, but just a couple of things regardless of the route, a couple of the changes, the definitions are cut down to ORS definitions because as Ian told us, there's some legislative changes that might come with those definitions, we don't want to keep changing our ordinance, so we just referred to the state, which is always a good thing. We also cut out a lot of the safety and things that enforcement would be enforcing through their codes and through state code. So that they, because they're not gonna learn our code, they're not gonna know our ordinances and they're not gonna cite on our ordinances technically. So we kept it really streamlined. One of the major changes I do want to bring out in, in the name of transparency is we had a provision for time. You could be out. I don't, now I can't remember if my mind is mush, but I, I am to eleven thirty minutes after dusk, that is gone. Because if you have the right equipment, the blinkers, the lights, it really doesn't matter, and so you will be cited if you don't have that and it'll be very obvious if you don't have that. And so that makes it easier for dunes patrol and then because I, I don't see where the city has a big the I guess the, the nature of enforcing that against cars or any other kind of vehicle, whether a bicycle has a light, i- isn't a big thing for us. And then there is some safety things that we did put in there, but it, it is very streamlined, it is very clean and so with that, I'll let comments go back and then you guys can deliberate. Or if you have any questions for Ian.
Is there any more public comments on that? Hey, does council have any comments?
Thank you for codifying it. That's my new word of the day is codified.
Thank you for referring to the codes that are the state codes, like for the definitions and everything, so that makes it easier for when the state changes what's required, we don't have to go back and update our ordinance. We refer directly to what's codified with state, then it's automatically changed in our ordinance.
Yes.
And that's really appreciative.
That was Ian. Thanks to you.
Let me make a motion?
If you want to make a motion?
I move.
No, okay.
I moved that the Lakeside City Council approved ordinance twenty-three dash three oh eight. An ordinance repealing and adopting a new chapter seven. Title seven of the Lakeside Municipal Court Code authorizing the operation of all terrain vehicles to utilize a route to spin real dunes, providing the route description and allowing for direct access to the route from within city limits.
My second. Alright. All in there?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Alright. Motion carries. Okay. Alright. Alright. Well, alright. Now another one, ordinance twenty-three dash three oh nine, an ordinance amending and repealing portion of Title fifty-two of the Municipal Code dealing with delinquent accounts. Staff report?
Sure, so this ordinance is brought to you by your friendly city manager and attorney. So last month, I believe, maybe a month or two ago, I'm losing track of time, you, you passed a resolution which created a policy of when customers, wastewater customers uh wastewater customers or sewer customers were over five hundred dollars in arrears, uh they could be turned over to collections. That was the threshold you chose. Um, we started that process. Um, I will say this, just as an update, uh we had letters go out to numerous customers, and since that resolution, you've actually, um, the city has recouped over thirty thousand dollars. Which is great, so it's working. Um, but we do have some customers that we are going to have to um turn over, and, and some of them are, I will tell you this, some of them is like the person died, and so the estate has to, i- it's not always just people not paying, but um, when we went to the collections agency, they charge, of course, thirty percent. Um, didn't think anything of it, our actual application that is signed by the owner states that we can collect that, that money, that debt. Um, there's a loophole though, because the collection agency can't tack that on. They have to take it out of the amount owed. And so uh any amounts that we get, for instance, we turned over as, uh, we have, we had a person, we had a customer with them already from years past. They actually came in and made a payment, a sixty-five dollar payment on their bill. Um, we have to go to collections, they consider that collecting for us, even though we took the money here, and um they took nineteen dollars of it for that thirty percent. So quickly realized this wasn't going to work. And um started working with them legally, what they could do legally, what we could do, and the answer was we need to change our ordinance so that even though our application says it, our ordinance says that if we go to turn somebody over to collections, we will automatically add that thirty percent onto their bill. We will send that as a total bill to the collections agency, they'll wipe their thirty percent off the top and will be made whole. Um, and so that is why we're changing our ordinance now. So, um, that is what it is.
Is there any public comment? No? Any council comments?
I move that we uh adopt ordinance twenty-three dash three oh nine, an ordinance amending or repealing portions of title.
Motion's been made by Councilor Pointer and seconded by Councilor Coats. All in favor? Um, any opposed? Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-three, a resolution authorizing city manager to sign all purchase documents for tax law. Eleven thousand one hundred, accessory map of twenty-three S dash twelve W dash eighteen BD for two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah, hold on, I have a question. I'm trying to, I'm trying to run everything here. Okay, it wasn't a question. Yeah, there, there really isn't much to, this is a formality that has to be done to go when they uh reg, uh file the deed, and they have to have this resolution on file that auth, that you authorized me to sign the purchase agreement. And that the council has agreed to it, uh the property sell, or the property purchase, sorry. Um, and so we got it on the agenda for you. It looks like closing maybe around May first.
Alright. There any public comment?
You, you don't have to do public comment for resolution.
Sorry, my bad.
You don't want to, you can, obviously, you can.
Yes, yeah. Okay, is there? Can I get a motion?
I move we uh adopt resolution, this resolution twenty-two-three oh three, resolution authorizing city manager to sign all purchase documents for tax law, eleven thousand one hundred assessors now, it's twenty-three south, twelve west. Eighteen, and I'm not sure what medium, for two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
My second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilor Pointer and seconded by Councilor Hearn. Um, all in favor? Opposed?
Do we have room for discussion? I was rooting for this, city manager made a burden case that we should buy the property. And I think that's too much money for the city to spend on a nebulous project. Just that mayor may not someday do something good for the city. So, and the other minor thing, especially after the recent county, that makes that public property.
I, I have the same ones. I wasn't here for the vote, but against the price myself. This is a, from a contracted point of view, the property seemed like it even more than what the price was for. It's a little too late now, I guess, I voted it, but that's my say. But if we're gonna buy it, then she should be able to sign for it, so yay on that.
Thanks, guys. I, I do wanna go on record, is I, I made cases on both sides. I think I was very clear about not sure myself, going both ways. I laid it out for you guys, you guys made the vote. I wanna go on record saying that it was not my, my decision.
Right, yeah, you, you did.
More than about it. But I guess the next thing we need to ask is
You lose, you lose your earnest money, and I think we might owe some additional money for um it going out through the cancellation, I think. That's my, yeah. So, yeah.
Do you not have any idea what that amount is?
I think we paid them eight thousand down, and um I think it's three. Was it six? Sorry, sorry. Like I said, my mind is a little mushy with details, but.
Is there any other discussion?
My feeling is a good investment. We can get a good business there and be for the future, it looks like.
Anything can I throw in that?
I personally think it's an investment for the city. There's, uh, we've been seeing some things on Facebook where people have given some suggestions as to what can be done for the property. And uh one thing I do know too, that I need to, I think should point to be made is that no citizens' tax dollars are used to buy the property because the citizens don't pay a tax. So this is the city doing this as an investment, not out of the citizens' pockets to pay for something they may or may not agree with. I just want that.
No, no, it does, it cannot come from the sewer fees. We cannot use those money. No, it's, it's state shared revenues and uh like uh from business licenses. So there is some fees if you get a business or you pay for a business license, but those are seven thousand dollars a year. I think I, you're gonna hear this at budget time anyway, so I'll just burst the bubble now, and I think you didn't ask my opinion, but I'll, I'll give it. Um, here's the thing, um, the city everybody gets frustrated because I say we don't have money and we're going broke, and we are. Um, I'll make that clear at budget, and it will be clear as day, it will be transparent. You will see the numbers. Um, the reality is this isn't the straw. Um, there's nothing that's gonna save the city except a sustainable revenue source. You have to have sustainable revenue source. Your sustainable revenue source right now is your shared revenues. The shared revenues are based on population and your property taxes that you take in. Guess what? We don't have any, so we're never gonna get the full amount of the shared revenue. We're also, um, they're going down because state legislature keeps pulling more and more out of them, um, with their laws. And so, um, the reality is i- if you purchase this property, if you decide tonight to, and I, I, you're gonna lose money if you don't, and that's, that's okay too. Um, e- you have two years to put a, a measure on in the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. If it doesn't pass, you're out of, you have nothing else. So if it doesn't pass, that's fine. Um, the citizens have spoken, you'll, you'll probably disincorporate, and the property will go to the county anyway. So i- if you're looking at it from a, just a point blank, take all the emotion out of it, it's no harm, no foul. If you pass the tax, you could probably pay it off in a year or two anyway, and then you could do some great economic development with it. So from a manager standpoint, if I'm sitting here as a city manager, that's what I would say to you. Now, there's emotions involved, there's people's opinions involved, you have a vote involved, and that's fine. I am okay. Either way you go, I have no skin in the game. I'm just trying to do what's best for the city. So I give you that answer as in, that's my big picture look at the city. That's where you are.
Well, I don't think that we're gonna let it just sit there for four or five years blank. So I'm, I'm looking for a future, somebody to come in and, and do an investment on it, and hopefully build a, a good business and living quarters above. And make it a profitable business, and it'll pay for itself. So that's where I'm, I'm looking for it, rather than it sitting in and becoming a, a trailer park or something like that. I'm looking for a long-term business here. And I think that's, now that we have it, and now that we've had more Dunes access, people would be coming in and, and wanting to to settle down here and, and, and actually make some money.
And I see the city's going forward. I definitely understand we need a, a revenue source. And, and I agree with you, you know, if, um, if we don't get a city tax. And we will have to unincorporate, and it'll go to the county. Everything in this town will go to the county. And people don't really understand what will happen and how expensive it is if we unincorporate. And it's not just a matter of, you know, gee, let's unincorporate, okay, let's reincorporate. It takes money, which we don't have. So, um. You lose services if you incorporate. I mean, if you really wanna know, do some research on it, because it's really not all it's cracked up to be. So, but I think that it is an investment, and I personally think that if we're gonna take the city in a forward motion, and we're going to try to improve our city and bring in more businesses. I think it's a perfect location for somebody. It's a prime, it's a prime thought. So, I I'm not all about losing money, but I think in, I don't know, in life, you just, you, everything's a risk. That's my opinion. Is there any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay, can I get on, do I need a motion?
You had a motion.
Oh, yeah, a motion. Fine, okay. Alright. So.
All in favor?
All in favor? All opposed? Alright. Okay. Alright, re- hmm. Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-four, resolution accepting grant funds from the Ford Family Foundation in the amount of seven thousand five hundred for branding logo and vision project.
The fun one finally. Um, so I reached out to the Ford family, um basically, and asked them if they would help with our project, knowing that that one line item could easily, you know, this would wipe that out. Um, which is what we budgeted for, so that's okay, but um they agreed that it was a worthy cause, and so they funded us at seventy-five hundred, which actually pays for phase one of the branding project, so. It's pretty cool.
Alright, so any, any council discussions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. Alright, all in favor?
I move we accept uh resolution twenty-two-three oh four, resolution accepting grant function for time representation in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for branding logo and vision.
My second.
Alright, motion's been made by Councilor Pointer, seconded by Councilor Hearn. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Alright, next item. Acceptance of approval in an award of contract to Covota San Fernando USA appropriation in the amount of two million, two hundred and seven thousand dollars for wastewater treatments on Osprey project number one point one dash or point two seven, and authorizing the city manager to sign notice to award.
Um, so this is the membrane. The big thing for uh wastewater. Actually, Aaron's here. And I'm gonna let him tell you all about, since he decided to come to the meeting, I'm gonna make him work.
This is a, a corporate contract. And find out if you have a designer or supplier that did natural design, the office did the equipment, and build around. Um, and we have finished up with two point five million, the bid was up with two point one. Your target, uh, keep in mind that there's an inflation clause in there, because we don't know exactly, don't think contract will install. But we spend within budget, and we recommend you operate mostly to give the most reward in the both contracts.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
So we're still on track timewise?
Scheduled originally to be, um, developed, designed to be approved in January next year, hoping to be, um, sorry, November, October, November.
Cool, thank you so much.
Alright.
I make a motion that we authorize Melissa to sign the paperwork to make this happen. For, for project one two one point two seven, uh, the upgrades for the sewer system membrane.
Alright, motion made by Councilor Hearn, seconded by Councilor Coats. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Let's see, we have Jim Hill. Alright, from the Lakeside Airport.
Yeah, Jim Hill, um, Lakeside Airport Commission. Back in twenty nineteen, um, they actually started the commission, which you're, I don't know if everybody's familiar with that or not. But uh anyhow, they had, a group of guys got together to help make the airport better. And uh we still have that group, some of the guys have left, uh, some have moved away. Um, but they actually wanted me to kinda take over the previous uh airport manager, I guess that's the position. I don't know if they can clarify that that's actually what my position is, but uh but at any rate, uh what I wanted to bring to you guys, I, I don't know, I, I know I've talked to Melissa about it, but uh all of us as hangar owners are not sure what, if we have an, so, is it an increased rate for square foot on our hangars or not? Does anybody have that clarification, or does something you guys wanna consult with each other?
Yes, you have a twenty-five cent square footage rate that was adopted with the last fee schedule at the last budget.
When you say the last budget was that?
Last year fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
The thing that's puzzling to all of us hangar owners is it wasn't acknowledged to us that, especially not to me that I know of. And by Oregon Department of Aviation, I, I could pass without you guys, you guys can review it. I know maybe you've seen it before, but they have statewide rates and charges that they do a survey on throughout the whole state of all the airports. And they usually regulate, uh, not regulate, but they suggest that the fees be according to what the airport offers to the pilots and the people that climb in, of course. Our airport is kind of unique. It's a grass airstrip. We have no term, no fuel, no, no runway lights, no weather reports. It's in our rate, if you look at these charts that I'll leave with you guys, they're excessively high. And then to take our twelve cents, which was previous and raise it to twenty-five is over twice as much. I mean, me personally, it's, uh, it's not a big expense to me compared, I'm in business, I have three locations throughout Oregon and uh, it's, that's a small charge, but for some of these guys that, you know, that are retired or whatever. And then just being fair about having a charge that's like something equivalent to like bend or something, you know, where they have a pilot lounge, bathrooms, they have a restaurant, fuel, paved runways. Just, I, I believe it's excessive. I know that the city doesn't have a lot of money to work with and I, I, maybe that's justifying what the insurance costs for the airport. I'm not sure. I haven't seen any, you know, financials as far as what it costs to keep the airport in the city. But uh, we all believe that it's excessive. And then, you know, I know that the airport is used for wastewater treatment plant for, you know, the sprinklers to get rid of the wastewater. And I know that some, even if it wasn't an airport, it'd still be used at that. I know it costs a lot of money to mow the airport. We even had volunteers when we first started the commission to help do that. But I know that there's insurance reasons. Somebody got hurt, even if they signed waivers, it could be still fall upon the city. Anyhow, we're just asking that you guys kind of, if you can review that and let us know you know, if there's any wiggle room in that. I, I know inflation's gone up since uh, since twenty nineteen when it was twelve cents for for non-commercial use. And then they had fifteen cents for commercial use before. So anyhow, we'd like to see something, you know, you guys at least review it. You know, for in the future, what we're going to have other people that want to build hangers here, they're going to live at that. I know Melissa had had a potential person that's interested and she, I think she told him, like, it'd be twenty-five cents a square foot. They didn't have a problem with that, but but the guys that have been there for ten, fifteen years and, and you know, they're they're a little concerned about it.
How long has it been? Uh, twelve cents?
Twelve cents, it was raised, actually. I don't know exactly when they raised it. It was like eight cents and then they raised it to twelve cents. And that was in nineteen. And then they actually tried to raise it again and that got shot down back to the twelve cents again. So anyhow, I'll leave these rates with you guys with the statewide. You can see all the different airport.
They were in their packet. They had them.
Question, looking at your numbers here, what do you guys as a committee think would be fair square footage? I mean, I can't go back to twelve cents, obviously.
Sure, sure.
But if you don't take twelve, twenty-five cents a spare, what would you guys consider together would be a fair amount?
Well, I need to mention that to the guys. I think, uh, you know, like because we, even if you look at these other charges that other people have, I mean, we're actually higher than some, some paved airstrips. So I can't speak to the other guys, but I mean, I think a fair price would be fifteen cents. Kind of bring it up the, the, the next year, maybe, you know, just like, you can't just, if somebody said, oh, we're going to take the, uh, city sewer, you know, like yours for your sewer payment and go from sixty-five and then next year it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty. You'd have the whole city right in here doing a lot more. They'd be packing this place in, so. I mean, I, I've got some of the pilot guys here that have hangers and, and pilots and, you know, this and I just don't want to see, I, I, I love this little town. I, I don't live here permanently. But I have several pieces of property here. I, you know, and it's a, it's a great place. Uh, my, my son just moved here, just bought a place here too. And um, this, this is like our family get-together. It has been for years. And I know a lot of people that I talk to, and I, I'm from the Medford area. A lot of people are like, you know, where do you, where do you guys go all the time? It's the coast. I tell them Lakeside and they go, where's that at? That's the problem with, you know, and I know with Melissa, with the branding, I think that's going to help put us on, on the map. We really, we really need to, you know, with ATVs, we're the only, far as I know, we're the only town in the entire West Coast here that you can have ATVs and, and, and you know, come in and have dinner or whatever, or stay the night in, in a lodge or leave from your house. So I think, you know, with the branding and then the airport, I want to see that grow too, because I, I'm a, I'm a pilot and I have bush planes and I fly into Idaho and go up into the back country. And uh, they have grass airstrips there and they, they, they accommodate pilots there. Um, and there's people from all over the country go there. Just, and I, I can see this happening too, where we're going to have people from, I, I belong to a, a flying club in, in Medford and we have close to two hundred members. And while these people want to come over and uh, come to the airport here and a lot of them say, hey, are there any property left over there? Build a hangar or buy property near it. I like to see hangar homes and all that stuff even come. Uh, I bought this property on Sarah Lane and that's what we're planning on doing is building a hangar home there where you can instead of driving over here three hours from Medford, I can get an airplane, fly over here, put airplane in the hangar and go in the house. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here, but the chase away guys at twenty-five cents, I think we need to kind of just move it a little slower. And then on another subject too, I know um, being the ATV things with the airport, this is the second year in a row it's brought up from UTV takeover to uh, use the airport for more candy because they're, they're, they've already been, I, I, I read an article or read an, an email that I believe it had like seven hundred people on a waiting list to try to find a place to camp. I don't know if you guys have seen that. That's something I know it's kind of coming up quick on us now, but maybe next year, I know that you can close the airport actually and, and the pilots and the hangar owners are in favor of it. It brings some more money to the town. Something that they might be able to even maybe take some of that appropriated money and do some improvements at the airport. And you can close an airport, you just have to put a note down. And then also the good idea is put an X in front of each end of the runway. They're doing for events all over the country. So, something to look at. That's all I got to say.
One concern is the affluent.
Yeah. Aaron, Aaron can probably speak to it. I just want to DQ, um, our permit requires us to discharge a certain way and we are required to discharge that way. Um, and our fluent is they don't want people around it. I mean, even though you're supposed to be able to drink it. I don't know of anybody that actually has taken that challenge, but um, I've actually seen them bring glasses in and, and, in conferences and, and, but um, you know, you're not supposed to have people around it. Um, it, it, it's, it's it's to the point where we're supposed to be picking up the grass clippings. We don't, but we're supposed to be, we're technically. So I, I think it's a non-starter and I don't want the city and people to get all gung ho about this when it's a no from the get-go. And I would love to work with UTV takeover. I want them here. I want them camp here. I want people here. And I want to work with them to figure it out. It's just finding what they're looking for, which is a huge piece of property and we don't necessarily have it that I can think of off the top of my head. I, I thought of different areas and different lots. But it was so wet this year that we're, we're concerned it's going to still be wet when they're there. And so um, I'm not against this. I want this here. I want them to come here and work with them. It's just that airport that we're stuck on that idea, it's going to be a no. And I don't want people thinking the city or we're against business and saying no when we have no control over this. It's actually a requirement and a DQ no. It's also an, as the state airport even told us, no, they said absolutely not. We'll have people on the airport. So we may be able to close it, but they still don't want people camped out there. Um, I think because of emergency landings or whatever happens. And so um, I think we need to go to the drawing board and think and um, figure out how we can or what we can do next year if there, you know, whatever happens. But I'm certainly um, would love to have those discussions.
Yeah, and I think we can.
All right, thank you for that.
I have a friend who has an airplane, but his insurance won't let him land on a grass runway. So he can't come up.
All right, moving on. Fourth of July banner discussion.
Uh, so last month at your council meeting, one of the, um, we had two companies submit banner designs. One of them wasn't able to be um printed or shown. And so I redid it. So hopefully you saw both of those um, in your packets. And um, if you still are interested in doing a banner for Fourth of July, you can now decide that.
So was this one that we couldn't get last time?
Yeah.
The one that actually says welcome to boarding.
Yeah.
I like that banner. I think it's really cool. It shows, tells where it it starts to does, giving welcomes everybody. And I think it's really a, a good banner. I don't know that, um, you know, price wise, I, I'm assuming that the price to me seems reasonable compared to, I think in our last discussion, you had mentioned one banner that was going to be like fifteen hundred dollars came up. And this one is considerably less expensive and the person who is responsible for making this does good work.
Do we have a price for Adams?
Yeah, it's on there.
No, he's going to be windproof.
So the second banner is this, this one goes with the one.
Yeah, I see the um, it's a difference in the size. Oh, like a foot taller?
You guys can choose whatever size banner you want. It's just that, you know, I mean, the, they were, we estimated for our quote how big we felt the space was. Based on the banner we got last year, which was a little smaller than the third.
Thanks for that clarification. Anybody have any comments?
I just have a question if we project tonight, would we be able to have a fight in fourth of July this year?
I know he's shaking his head yes.
I think both, both of them could get it there.
I wanted to call and share if we're going to spend money as community on the banner, maybe the banner is not specific to a particular day, like the Fourth of July. It's welcome for that season or that, you know what I mean? And when you put up a banner that says Fourth of July, these particular dates or whatnot, once that's over, you got to take it down.
Yeah, Adam, but you're not, so just, I, I appreciate that, but you have two bids in front of you and the other person's not here to, to haggle and talk about different ideas. And so I think in fairness to both parties, you need to just decide and you can put it off and say you don't want to choose one this year. You can ask me to bring back other information from both companies. You can do that, but I think um, this is a bid situation or, you know, where they're providing options. And so you need to choose or not choose or ask me for more information. So they both have the option and the same um, chance to, yes.
So if we decided to put this off for another month in case Ashley could come?
I, I don't think you want to do it where they come and talk because then you're going to wind up into this whole, it, it doesn't work that way. It's, we can be more specific. But if you ask me to go take back information you want from both people, then I can do that and get your answers or you know, it's your option. You can say, we don't want a banner this year. It's not like a have to do thing. It's just whatever you want. And I, you guys had, we had talked about maybe the idea of putting one up. And so um, and then we talked about the idea of going local. And so that's where we're at.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
I like them both.
Alan? You have any? You got nothing? Yeah, I do, I do too. I don't know. No, grounds every two inches. See, I don't know all the details. I'm not a, a banner.
I have a question, Melissa. So the, the point of the banner was to have it specifically for Fourth of July because the Fourth of July and Christmas are like our two biggest holidays where we have people come into the town. And this was the idea to be like, hey, welcome, because we have this big, huge thing going on.
That was my understanding from you. It was a Fourth of July.
Okay.
That's what I was, that's what I was talking. Yeah, we can do it. We can do it by vote of which one, yeah, Jordan, which one you want to choose?
Well, you can hold up the picture.
I make.
Yes, but he, yes, but it's, it's Adam's company and this is the other company. So.
Do we make a motion?
Yep. Oh, yeah, you're spending money.
That we accept Ashley shares Fourth of July banner because that expresses another event at Lakeside.
A second. All right. Made by councillor Hearn and seconded by councillor Coles. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Right? So you will let Ashley know Melissa?
And you had a good idea, Adam, about, you know, not having a date on there. So maybe we can get something down by the Dollar Tree.
Yes, you guys mentioned that you're, I don't know about banners.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Really want to Richard Gordon trade report. Airport.
Sorry, people are, I'm trying to make sure there's no questions. Multitasking, it's not working well. Um, wait, this is committee reports. What are you asking me? Oh, airport. I um, I, I, they had a meeting that was scheduled and I um, I blew it. I wasn't, I didn't show up. I um, it was my fault. It was my fault. It was on Saturday and it was supposed to be here and um, I, I missed it. I apologize. That was my bad. I I really did mess it up. Yeah, no, it was on me. It's definitely me.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, Water Show becomes the Miller. We're gonna pass on that one. Water District, Councilor Hearn.
Yes, I went to the Water District meeting um, on May eighteenth between nine and twelve thirty. The one stop grant writing is coming to Lakeside. And then they get into a public meeting workshop. Um, McMaid, Mike Mader will be coming. Yeah, so hopefully they can get some grant writing for the uh, more of the water um. Just had a brain fart. Water District's uh, equipment. Um, they're getting a new phone that will take the place of a pager for their on-call personnel. That way they can't ignore it. Um, Alan.
I'm sorry.
Alan pump got fixed. They have extra parts and we now have a redundancy pump. So if one breaks, it still won't uh, affect the system. Um, they're still trying to get their electronics updated. Um, our pieces, parts aren't always meshing in with their pieces, parts for the electronics to to make sure that all systems are working at the same time. Um, discussion was made about having the blow off between Fifth and Sixth Streets. Um, that needs to be, the water table's too high for them to fix it. The valves and pipes are rusting. And they're trying to figure out whether to wait for and and do it a loop system when they get grant money or to just blow it off. Now. And uh, so they're wanting to get uh, estimates for the comparison between the difference between blowing it off and and looping the the pipes. And uh, their tractor needs more maintenance. And that's also on the one stop wish list for the uh, grant writing. And that was it.
All right. Anybody have to go to the Ten Mile Lake Association or do they have a meeting? Do you know?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm, don't get
We did.
They did.
Missed it.
All right, well. I just, you can just put two more hours in a day. I would love to put you on that.
Ooh.
Man, you just, ah, you just did. Thank you for volunteering. All right.
My turn, just the T L A, I'm sorry, in the public, but um, they do have late cleanup day and that's a a big event. I know they talked about that. They're looking for volunteers. Uh, Big H that passed away, rest God rest his soul. Um, his memorial is that same day and we're back in on a chicken hot dogs and stuff like that. Some of the Big H's. But they do want people to still participate and help clean up on late day, which I think is
Twenty second.
Yeah, that's also um, that's also Mr. Counselor Miller's
Right.
Vice Memorial.
Memorial too.
All right. It's a very impressive day.
Went along.
Water District, Councilor Pointer.
All right, he uh, discussed the uh, the egg hunt and it was a great success. Discussed a little further, putting the station on the north side and possible locations for that. We have approved purchasing a automatic CPR device and a new monitor for the fire department. We um, fire department has forty calls last month and a hundred and seventy so far this year. That's about it. Mr. Pointer, two and a half million dollar grant. Oh, which which was supposed to be a secret for the day, but he didn't call. Yes, the party was two thousand million dollar grant to um, improve earthquake survivability for the fire hall. That's that construction will begin in about a year or so.
Great. Yeah. Okay. Lakeside business on the
I don't think they had a meeting. If they did, I missed it. I was asked them to.
Right in the game.
Rocks.
Rocks.
Rocks, rocks. Rocks.
Scared her mother to death. Hey. All right. Well, that's the end of that. So let's do a city manager report.
Sorry. I was just waiting there. I know. Um, I I'll make it short because I know the meeting's gone long, but um, I just want to thank Patty Mul- Mulholland Hill. I can't say her last name. Mobile, Mobile Hill. Anyway, uh, for coming to Lakeside. Um, if you were here, I don't think you realize what a privilege it was to actually get her here in Lakeside. She is one of the most busiest women I know. She was um, I I knew her from previous um, employment um, when she started on League of Oregon Cities as their general counsel. And she is down to earth and such a pleasure to be around all the time. Um, we went to dinner at the lodge. Um, showed her that and she was just, she was astounded and said, this place is beautiful. And um, so um, it it was, it was good to get her here. She's busy. As she said, it's it's legislature time. Um, she's got lobbyists calling her all the time. They um, and so she hasn't been home in seven days or something like that. So she was actually driving back to Salem tonight and gonna sleep in her own bed or something. Uh, either that or she's going to go on the road for seven days. But um, she, small cities like us don't always get her here. She is very busy and it's not that she doesn't want to. It's just, it it's um, her time is limited. And so she is a very good speaker and I knew she would do well with um, our public. And so um, I'm I'm excited that she took the time to be here. Other than that, I did speak at um, the Reed's Port Rotary um, as their speaker. I I again, um, two or three weeks ago, um, I I one of their meetings, uh, spoke on Lakeside and um, what a wonderful community and and city we have and uh, gave a history lesson about Lakeside and the history of Lakeside and where we've gone, where we're going. And um, I got a very nice email from somebody uh, that said it was a pleasure and they had no idea um, that that Lakeside had the history it had and they were excited about where we're headed. So that was, that was really nice. Um, budget, May eleventh, um, you're gonna have um, budget at five o'clock. Um, I'm gonna try to condense my orientation to an hour because you have a meeting after that and your your agenda is filling up again. Um, it just seems to be the time. So um, I am doing this year a PowerPoint for the budget, so it should be um, uh, good. And uh, your budget committee is full. You, um, so it's exciting. So we're looking forward to that. That is all I have.
Are you sure? Okay. Okay. All right. Council comments. Councilor Hearn. All these names, they just
Hi, I'm Mavis. One of them. Um, I had to want to thank Patty for coming. I've heard her two or three times uh, talk and and she's so full of information. I love the word codify. That's gonna be my word of the day. And I can see looking through all the ordinances and trying to figure out what goes where, that it needs to be done and that costs money. So we're looking forward to hopefully in the next few years, getting all of our ordinances all in order. So we don't have the the mistakes and and oops that I've seen happen before here. Um, I'm really appreciative to the Ford Foundation for the money for our branding. That's gonna really help my Lakeside. I took the people out on the dunes that came here for the branding. I scared them and they still loved it. So I said, if you think it's fun in the winter and when it was raining and cold, uh, it's gonna be even great in the summertime. So hopefully they'll come back and enjoy that then. But yeah, that that has me excited that way. And I'm glad we've got the ATV settled down hopefully now. And we can just go on to our next project.
All right. Councilor Smith.
I just want to say thank you for everyone that is in the audience and on Zoom and participating and showing up. It's really nice to see a full room once again. I mean, it's been a while. Um, I'd like to say thank you to Melissa for all the hard work and hours that you put in. I do see your card here quite late sometimes. So I know that you're picking tush on stuff that needs to be taken care of. Um, uh, I'm really glad for the Ford for giving us the grants and um, everything that the the way the city's gonna go forward. I also want to put out there too. Um, I know there's a lot of people working right now and they can't be here and sometimes you don't feel their voice can be heard. Just remember you can or a comment, put in an email and your comments in the comment will be read. Your voice will be heard. Um, even if you can't be here, it will be recorded. You can see it on the website. You can also see it on on YouTube that your your voice was heard. And I just want to make sure that everyone in the city has that opportunity to know that their voice can absolutely be heard, even if they can't be here in person. Um, and um, I just, just love my town. Love my town. Excuse me, city. Let me clarify.
City.
It's the city. We don't have a town hall. We have a state hall, so we're special. It may be a small one.
Uh, so kind of to touch on what she said, uh, thank you for all the people out there that stood up and made comments today. Uh, I've been there and it's nerve wracking and you get nervous and emotional. So thank you for speaking up and thank you for all those who came and uh, attended the, I guess, lecture or whatever about the homelessness.
Presentation.
Presentation. I hope now where people have understand the rock and the hard place, uh, the city gets put in and we can't just kick people off of buildings and things for people. Um, also uh, to touch on the non-city thing, with the city thing, uh, my husband's cat Joe is back at the liquor store. And he's friendly and he just, I've driven him to drink, I believe. That's why he's there. For the entire two weeks I was gone, it was reported that he just left home and he will, I can't give him stay there, but he does have a home. He's very well cared for. Please don't pack up my cat. Thanks. Well, somebody's trying to take him. I'm like, please don't take my cat.
Liquor store Joe.
Liquor store Joe. He lives in a cardboard box. I'm sorry. It's because I live behind the liquor store. So he, he does.
Alrighty. We never told him it was a kitten. All right. Again, thanks.
Now I've gone dumb on her name. Patty, for coming, they give us that information on the homeless. Um, what the federal law versus state law versus what, if anything, we come up with an ordinance and how difficult it is a um, subject that's going around because homelessness, whatever the reason are that they're homeless, it the fact that they are impacts everybody else around them. And we have people, homeowners, who take pride in their house and pride in their city. And then a good portion of the homeless don't have that pride and it impacts the city and where everybody lives. And it's really tough when you don't have the guidance from the people that are supposed to give you guidance on how we go about helping this problem, correcting this problem, helping the people that are where they are. And it makes it very difficult. So having her come and take that time to speak to us and clarify some things, I think helps everybody. And I wish there were more people that had come to hear it because it is such a difficult um, topic to do. Because we care, you know? We don't want anybody to be homeless, but at the same time we we have things around us, our homes and our city that we want taken care of and we want to be proud of our city and we are proud of our city. And I want to thank um, Melissa for everything that she does and being new to the council, I've had many, many questions. I, when I call her now, I call it, I said, it's your pest. I got another question for you. And she is very helpful, very informative. And I encourage the city, the the people in the city to pick up a phone, send her an email. Um, whatever you have to do, if you have a question about something that you've heard going on in the city or a friend of a friend has said, call Melissa. She is very informative. She is on the mic. If she doesn't have the answer for you immediately, she will give you the answer. But take the time to talk to her. Same with coming to the council. Your voice can be heard here. You were saying about sending an email, you know, so your voice is heard. Don't continue to spread rumor, innuendo, and just plain nastiness out there about something you may or may not know. Talk to the woman. Talk to the mayor. Talk to any of us. We're available.
Not be the answer you want.
That's the thing. It may not be the answer you want, but at least get it from the the horse's mouth instead of rumor and innuendo. Uh, Facebook's not the place to seek. Exactly. So come, pick up the phone. Melissa will answer you. We will answer you. And we were really appreciative that we have so many people here tonight that came, whether it was for the presentation or for the meeting itself. The people who have stuck this evening because it's gone over so many hours now. And all a lot of busy workers, not everybody who's retired. And we hope to see you continue to come and to give your input because we care and that's why we're up here. That's why we ran or in my case appointed to take the open position. We care what happens to the city. We love the city. And we love the people in the city. And the majority of people in the city care about what happens. Don't let the few who have an issue poison the rest of you and stop you from asking questions. That's important. Thanks.
All right. And Councilor Pointer.
It's okay. My door's open till it's not. Yeah.
Always got an answer for whatever you ask her. She's there. And she knows. So that was a good person to have here to tell us where we stand on homelessness. Um, glad to see everybody here tonight. Big audience. That's good to see you. Let's see that at every council. That's how you find out what's real. That's about it.
Okay. My turn. Okay, so um, I would like to thank Patty. I, this is like the fourth or fifth time that I've heard that. And I just love that she can take that legal mumbo jumbo and put it into layman's terms. And it does help people to understand. First time I heard her give this this talk, I was like, wow, that is not what I thought. But um, that she did a great job and I really want to thank her. I know she's extremely busy. And I want to thank you guys for coming to the city council meeting. Um, it is nice to see faces. It's nice to know we have, we had at one point nine people on Zooms. Um, the more the better. Um, I do want to say too that every Monday morning I have coffee with the mayor and I know some people just don't like me and I'm good with that. But um, we meet at the lodge at ten o'clock. All we do is have coffee and just talk. We don't make any decisions. We don't, nothing like that. But if you have something that you'd like to discuss, um, I do have some business cards. I'll get out my personal mayor phone number. Um, in fact, it's on there. You can email me. You can text me. You can call me, whatever. Um, even though it doesn't seem like it, I do represent everybody in this town. I love Lakeside. Um, I've been here for twelve years. I absolutely love it. I'm not going anywhere. And um, I'm still learning. I was on council for a year and this is my first try at the mayorhood, but I do, I am up here because I love this town. And I want to be part of this town succeeding. And I, that's what I care about. I care about Lakeside and I care about the citizens and I care about all of the citizens. So please, if if any of you want to contact me, there's business cards. You can call me, text me, email me, whatever. Um, also want to thank Jim. Thank you for your nice comments. Um, and thank you for your input on, on other subjects. I want to thank the counselors for their dedication. This is all volunteers. None of us are paid except for but she does earn it. She does a great job. And again, you know, all of us are available. Just contact us any way you can, but just, and I, I would like to personally apologize for the, my comments on Keyboard Warriors. It was uncalled for. And I do apologize for that. And um, I only go on there once a day, you know, to see what they're saying about you, but I don't. I just have to check it. Um, and I do have to say, Mavis, that when we talked to her at our last branding meeting. And I do have to say, Mavis, that when we talked to her at our last branding meeting about this branding stuff, one of the options for her branding was you're saying about all of your names and their, what is it?
I'm rude crude.
Rude crude.
And socially unacceptable.
Socially unacceptable. We thought, they thought, well, maybe that's not very, that's not very appealing to everybody.
We nixed that one really quick.
We did. But this is our town.
Yeah.
It's not my town. It's not their town. It's everybody's town. And I just want to see the whole city come together. I think we've, we've come a long ways and I want to see the city come together. Whether I agree with you or you disagree with me, doesn't matter. This is our town and we want to move forward. So I want to thank you all for being here. Hope to see you again. And with that, I'm going to adjourn meeting.